I'd like to call this meeting of, joint meeting of the Board of Health and the Board of County Commissioners to order. Today is Tuesday, August 25th, 2015. And the first item on the agenda is adjustments to the agenda. Any adjustments to the agenda? Seeing none, we'll move on to public comments. And this is a joint meeting of both the Board of Commissioners and the Board of Health. So there are actually two opportunities for public comment this morning. If you wish to address us this morning during this meeting, so you can go ahead and get going, and it's a general item, I'll take the public comment from anyone that wants to now, or they can wait until we convene our regular board meeting and comment then. So I'll offer the opportunity to the one person, I do have signed up for public comment right now, whether they want to speak now or wait till the regular meeting. So Ms. Otani, do you want to speak now?
Yes.
Would you prefer to speak now or wait for the regular meeting?
No.
Then why don't you come on up and state your name and where you're from for the record? And I'll also have Pat Hoover, if you wish to speak also. So, go ahead.
Thank you for making that accommodation. You don't have, yes, thank you.
Yeah, you don't have to sit through a whole bunch of discussion of tobacco to talk to us about parks.
Right, I mean, it would be interesting, but that's fine. Good morning, I'm Ellen Otani from Eugene. And as you probably will guess, I'm here to talk about the North Bottomlands of Howard Beaufort Recreation Area. I recently sent each of you an email requesting 15 minutes of your time to brief you on a set of documents that will take more than three minutes to explain. In fact, it may take me three minutes to explain why I need 15 minutes to explain. By better way of, by way of a better introduction, I passed the CPA exam and have worked for small businesses, as well as in the business office of a school district north of Los Angeles that was building three new schools and gaining 1,000 students a year. So I am aware of some of the challenges that are faced by a government agency. I realized early on that the problem with what I consider unauthorized misuse of the North Bottomlands for large events was the result of a system or internal control failure. It has come to my attention that the issues go deeper than not allowing the Parks Advisory Committee to exercise their advice and consent function. You, the commissioners, must have complete, accurate, and relevant information to make valid decisions. This could be a job for your internal auditor, but she can only do one thing at a time, and I agree with your priorities that she should handle mental health first. There are critical areas that need to be explored before the new Park and Open Space Master Plan that was just posted becomes finalized. The Large Event Task Force has not completed its work, yet the master plan appears to have been written, as if conversion to large events venue were already approved and being implemented in what I consider a complete violation of the HBR master plan currently in force. So I have brought a copy of the email in case, because I realize that you have stacks and stacks of emails. But I hope that you will allow me 15 minutes of each of your time to explain my concerns in greater detail. Thank you.
Thank you. So, Pat, do you want to address this now, or?
Sure.
Thank you.
I too would like to thank you for the accommodation. I'm Pat Hoover, I live in the north part of Eugene. I'm here to talk about parks, and I'm here as a consumer. You know me as a person involved with the Parks Advisory Committee, but I've just, I've got some concerns about what I've read and watched and observed with Mr. Malka Hyskey's reign as the administrator. I have the strategic plan that he put together in his first year, I'm impressed with this. But I'm concerned that possibly one division of the Lane County Government is still not up to speed with the openness and the transparency and the accountability that Mr. Malka Hyskey is really keying on in this strategic plan, and I think all of you are, as we start sort of the new era with him. A perfect example, I drove out to Mount Piscata a couple weeks ago, and there's a brand-new directional sign after you cross the river into the park. And to the north, it lists the name Emerald Meadows. And I was taken aback by that. That memorializes something that was done with no transparency, no accountability, and no openness. That naming of the North Bottomlands was done with basically an autocratic order from Parks Division. And there was no vetting of that by the public. No one knew what Emerald Meadows was. We already have two parks in Lane County. We have Emerald Park and we have Meadow Park. And had any of the PAC members or the public been asked, or the stakeholders at HBRA, the partners out at HBRA, had they been asked, what should we name North Bottomlands, if they even chose to rename it? I can't imagine it would have come up with that name. And that is not open and transparent. That is not even translucent. It's like a blackout, when no one knows from the public and inside the agency that something's being done like that. So I really want to have the precepts of this really good strategic plan that Mr. Malka Hyskey put together, used by all parts of Lane County. I mean, all of us need to be trying to be transparent and open and accountable to each other and with each other. So that's a concern of mine. And as we go forward, as Ellen mentioned, the master plan is up for public comment now, it's on the website, we're starting to have public meetings. It's just really important that the public be part of the process of including naming things and approving things, and having the public weigh in and get a chance to weigh in on their parks. I mean, the parks belong to the people. So, thank you very much.
You're welcome. So that's everyone I had signed up to speak in public comment. Is there anyone else that wishes to address the Board of Health and Board of Commissioners this morning? Seeing none, we'll move on to Commissioners' response to public comments and/or other issues or remonstrance. Any comments from Commissioners? Commissioner Sorensen.
When Ms. Otani was talking this morning about the, her request for 15 minutes from each of us, it occurred to me that maybe there'd be some economy of scale if she took 15 minutes at an upcoming board meeting, and then we could hear her perspective on what she's raised this morning.
Commissioner Farr.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just a clarification, we will have another opportunity for comments during the regular board meeting. Yes, thank you. Just a comment regarding Emerald Meadows. I'm looking at the website on Emerald, it's called Emerald Meadows at Beaufort Park. And so I'm interested to know when it was named and what process was named, what was used for name. I'd also like to hear the other parks in Lane County, some examples of when they were named and what process was used for naming parks. I don't know that there's always a public process for naming things, and I'd like to see where that falls in the grand scheme of deciding what landmarks or land features or parks are named. Thank you.
Any other comments or remonstrance? Seeing none, then we'll move on to item 4A, which is Order 1508-2501, in the matter of approving submission of comments to the Food and Drug Administration on the extension of the agency's authority to regulate additional tobacco products and related actions. And we have Alicia Hayes, and...
I'll do introductions if you...
Thank you, I was going to ask you to.
I thought the title was long enough to get us a chance to wheel up here.
Yeah. And you'll make sure you talk into the mics for everybody.
Very close to the mic. Good morning, Commissioners. Good morning, Chair Bozovic and Commissioners. This morning, I, during our presentation, is Dr. Lissandra Guzman. And Dr. Guzman is our Associate Public Health Officer. She's one of, she's also a preventative medicine physician. She's one of our bilingual staff and bilingual doctors, and she sees patients part-time at Charnelton, the CHC clinic. Also, you may see, or maybe you have seen, or you will see, her name, or her emails, or her contact, as we do our emergency preparedness and response. She and Dr. Ledke share that role. And today, Dr. Guzman has a presentation and request. Dr. Guzman?
Good morning, Chair Bozovic and Commissioners.
So, he's going to stop you and tell you to pull the mic closer.
This is better?
He's going to do that for him.
Okay. This is better?
Thanks, Alicia.
Okay. At any point in time, please let me know if my voice keeps coming down. So we are here to request your support. We would like to submit comments to the FDA in response to their advance notice of proposed rulemaking, supporting the implementation of nicotine exposure warning labels and child-resistant packaging for nicotine liquid and nicotine-containing e-liquids, including novel tobacco products. I'm hearing an echo, is that just me?
That's the sound system, but it's...
Okay.
It means that you're close enough to the microphone if you're hearing that echo a little bit.
Okay. So this is our request, that for all tobacco, for all products containing liquid nicotine and novel tobacco products, the FDA requires a child-resistant packaging, and the placement of warning labels that include the potential harms, the poison control number for in case of emergency, text that states "Keep Out of Reach of Children," and also there should be a color picture for people that have low literacy levels. And studies have shown that it's beneficial if it's in large font, placed in front of the package, simple language, and it should be rotated regularly to avoid overexposure and reduction in effectiveness. So why is labeling important? It is because nicotine is an acute toxin. There is a misunderstanding of the risks associated with these products due to the industry's aggressive marketing tactics. People do need to know that exposure to nicotine is not only by smoking it, but also by inhaling it, by swallowing it, and even by skin contact. It can result in nausea, vomiting, respiratory arrest, and even seizures and death. It can cause the placenta, eventually impairing the brain development of the fetus. It's also caused preterm births and SIDS. Many people are just not aware of these effects and the danger that comes with its use, so it's only fair to make them aware. The evidence that cigarette warnings, there is evidence that cigarette warnings do work. They have been found to be a source of information on the health hazards. They've also encouraged smokers to quit, and they've also discouraged non-smokers to start smoking. They are effective. In terms of the packaging, the packaging is also important. It prevents or protects anyone from unintentional exposure, and that includes adults and children. Personally speaking, I know of an elderly who wears glasses and uses eye drops, and she didn't have her glasses on, and she searched for a bottle that looked like an eyedropper, and it was actually her nicotine bottle. So, to say the least, she had retinas all around her eyes, irritation. And it wasn't a coconut flavor, it was actually menthol, so it made things worse. And then I had to advise the parents, which are my closest friends, to be careful when the childrens go over to her house. And they were actually surprised, and they had never thought about that, that the mom had, the grandmother had the vials just exposed. So it has a protective effect in improving storage and improving child safety. We also need a minimum national standard in terms of packaging. Many states are beginning to include a child-resistant packaging, but they are missing the enforcement mechanism. So now we have a national patchwork of regulations with inconsistent or non-existent enforcement. Products have a kid-friendly packaging, different flavors, different scents, and they're pretty attractive to children. The goal would be to prohibit this type of attractive marketing. So as you can see, there's pictures there of the Bazooka Joe, probably the flavor is a gum flavor. And this picture down here was from an assessment that was done here in Lane County, where you see the nicotine and e-cigarette, very close to Skittles and ice cream. So, this is our concern. E-cigarettes are being marketed to children. They're colorful, fun, flavorful, as I said before, candy flavor, fruit flavor. The packaging is kid-friendly, and they're pretty easily obtainable as well. During the 2014 Lane County Retail Assessment, 61% of the retailers were found to be placing tobacco in e-cigarette products, or advertising them within 12 feet of products like candy and toys, and also three feet off the floor, which is a three-to-four-year-old's eye level. Vaping is now seen as glamorized, and the technology is pretty cool and trendy. So this is why it's also important, the calls to poison control centers are rising. So, these are for e-cigarette exposures by mouth in the United States. As you can see, in the year 2010, we only, we started with one call in September, a month, I mean, yeah, a month, sorry. And then, as you see, there's been an increasing trend to, we have up to 2014. And in 2014, we were up to 215 calls a month to poison control centers regarding nicotine exposure in children. As you, there's an error in this graph, actually, from, there's 2010, 2011, 2012, 2012, 2014. So the second 2012 is 2013, sorry. So, there is a 143% increase from 2013 to 2014 in calls. Ingesting 1/4 of a teaspoon of a concentrated liquid nicotine is actually lethal for a 50-pound child. In Lane County, there were five reported cases under the age of six last year. Today, that we know of, there's been at least two cases of children. In last year, Lane County spent about $258 million on tobacco-related medical costs and lost productivity due to the premature tobacco-related deaths. There were 720 deaths last year. This is something that could have been prevented. This is equivalent to two people dying every day, or two jumbo jets crashing every year having Lane County residents. As youth continue to use novel nicotine products that lead to nicotine addiction and eventually switching to other tobacco products, we would expect the death toll to increase. And as you, Commissioner Farr, has said before, it increases the medical expenditure and it affects us all. Developing strategies to monitor and prevent future poisonings is critical. Given the rapid increase in e-cigarette-related poisonings, evidence shows that e-cigarette liquid containing nicotine have the potential to cause immediate adverse effects, and it represents an emerging public health concern. With proper labeling, we can raise public awareness, and with a standardized child packaging, we can decrease nicotine exposure among children. And that is our main goal.
Thank you, Dr. Guzman. I appreciate the report, and I apologize if I've been hacking a little bit here, but I feel like I was smoking this weekend in Lane County. So, the one question I have is on the request in your, in the comments for not only the textual "Keep Out of Reach of Children," but some kind of symbolic warning. Would it be good to reference U.S. Pharmacopeia's standardized warnings that they put on pharmacy products that have been kind of time-tested? You know, they've gone through just about every symbol you can kind of think of, whether it's to be taken by mouth, or, you know, all the various things. But would that be a proper, a reference maybe for, because, you know, this really is a drug we're talking about, and I think that's the, maybe the correct agency to refer to for textual warning. You know, the same warning that's on medicine as "Keep Out of Reach of Children" could be the same one that's on nicotine liquids.
So the question was whether we should use the same approach as the pharmaceutical companies?
Well, basically, U.S. Pharmacopeia is the standardization organization for pharmacy products, and they've developed a set of standardized, non-textual symbols for everything from, you know, taken orally to, you know, several other warnings, you know, "Take with food, don't take with food." You know, you guys have probably all seen them...
Yeah.
...stickered on to your little bottles you get from the pharmacy, but they have a, probably have a standard one about "Keep Out of Reach of Children," or not. I don't know if they do, but I think that might be a basis for trying to stick with what the industry is used to, and also kind of put e-cigarette liquids on the same basis as pharmaceuticals, because it's a drug.
Thank you, Chair Bozovic, Commissioners. Absolutely, we would be happy to take a look at that and find language to put into the letter that references, that they take a look at that. And we are consistent, because I think the consistency is also very important as we move forward with this packaging.
Thank you. I think Commissioner Farr had a question.
Thank you.
Yeah.
I'm going to talk more about this bottle a little bit later on, but, you know, I'm not six years old, and because of that, I have a bit of difficulty reading the print on this. In fact, even at that distance, I can't read the print on this. Six-year-olds have better eyesight than I do, but I think they have difficulty reading the warning labels on this. They're, yeah, that's a warning label, I can tell that, but I can't see what it says, you know? And this is Girl Scout Cookie Liquid. Mmm, sounds good, doesn't it? Doesn't that sound delicious? Now, I know that the responsible retailers in Lane County, some of whom are with us today, would screen selling this stuff to kids, even with the lack of labeling, even with the seductive labeling that's on here, that "Girl Scout Cookies." Nothing, "It's all good here," it says. All good. So, you know, I know that that's not happening with the responsible retailer, not everybody's responsible. Anybody, if, up until the time that we passed our ordinance, a six-year-old kid could go in and buy this and do whatever they wanted to do with it. You know, Girl Scout Cookies, drink that, right? I love Girl Scout Cookies. I love Bazooka Joe, you know? So I think I'm in full support of stronger labeling that makes it so that people, kids aren't enticed by the labeling, and that people are warned away from it. I'll talk more about this issue a little bit later on, but, you know, if we spend 1/10 as much money as we spend responding to tobacco-related illnesses, if we spend 1/10 as much money as we spend trying to get people to start smoking, trying to get people to stop smoking or quit, start, not start smoking, if we spend 1/10 of that amount of money, maybe nobody in this country would smoke, maybe nobody in this country would use tobacco products, and we wouldn't be having this discussion. But we have this discussion, we have to have this discussion. I don't want kids to start smoking, and I don't want, I want adults who have chosen to start smoking to find ways to quit, and have very good, very impressive ways, ways that are just as seductive as Girl Scout Cookie-flavored liquid nicotine, ways that are just as effective to get people to consider quitting smoking, because a lot of people don't consider quitting, and a lot of people don't know their options. So I'm in favor of this, and I think, thank you for the presentation, Dr. Guzman. I'd like to take a second to welcome you to Lane County, and thank you for joining our team, most effective team, at one of our, the most effective health teams you're ever going to see in the nation. And thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Sorensen.
I just wanted to ask you to back that slide up a little bit, right there. Could you give us some idea of where, it says nicotine is an acute toxin. Could you give us some idea of where that stands in relationship to other bad substances, I guess, that people routinely ingest, like caffeine, or maybe, I don't know, other bad things that people, that they're legally allowed to eat or consume as adults? Could you give us some idea of that? Because not everybody's a physician, and come to think of it, I think you might be the only one in the room. So can you give us some idea, so we can understand a little more about what does that sentence mean, nicotine is acute toxin?
Okay. Chair Bozovic and Commissioners, in reference, let's say, to caffeine, there's a lot of products out there that have caffeine. I can't say that just by drinking one or two will not kill you. I can't say that they would be indirectly leading you to problems with your heart, as it stimulates your autoimmune response, your blood pressure, your heart rate, and if your body is not able to handle that, then that could be a bad thing. But it's, it's not as potent as this nicotine. The problem with nicotine is that it's been very concentrated, it's sold as very concentrated. So one teaspoon can kill a kid, a tablespoon can kill a person, any one of us. And there's more than a tablespoon in that little bottle. So that's the problem that we're seeing, the concentration difference. There's a lot of chemicals in our food that cause harm to us, you know? Even the sugar substitutes that people use nowadays, there are studies that show that it may lead to cancer, but we still use it. It won't kill us right away, but it could have side effects eventually. But with this, it's pretty immediate.
Is that to distinguish nicotine from other bad things that are in cigarettes that are bad for you, such as the particulates, they're bad for you, but you won't die from it?
Okay, okay.
Immediately?
Yes, immediately. So if you take a cigarette, nicotine is not really what's bad for you in a cigarette. It is the other, over 200 components that it has that can cause cancer. But nicotine itself doesn't cause cancer. It is the addictive part that keeps everyone, or smokers, coming more and smoking more of it. But it is the form that we have created, that we have made it more concentrated, for too much for our body. So that's, that's the difference. But in comparison to the other products, it's, nicotine was not going to, like, cause cancer or anything like that.
Right.
So it's a concentration difference.
Are there any regulations of nicotine?
In what sense?
Well, federal, state, county, city, is there any restrictions on the sale of a product that is an acute toxin?
Containing nicotine? I don't think so.
Or is that what this Notice of Proposed Rulemaking is about, is to perhaps have a proposed rule, and that's why they're taking public comment on a Notice of Proposed Rulemaking?
So Chair Bozovic, Commissioner Sorensen, I think you're absolutely right. We've talked a lot about the lack of regulations around these products, and I think when we started talking about your local e-cigarette ordinance a year and a half ago, we talked about how great it would be if the FDA would adopt a national regulation, and they still aren't there. But this is their opportunity to at least begin to collect comment, to move toward those regulations. Here in Lane County, we've regulated the sale of these products. We've said you can't sell them to anyone under 18, you need to have a license to sell them. Those types of regulations we've created here in the county, but there isn't a national standard yet.
Okay. Thank you very much, and I too would like to welcome you to our county department and the important responsibilities you have.
Commissioner Farr.
Thank you. Just maybe a little bit in response to Commissioner Sorensen's question, I'm looking at an article called "Lethal Nicotine Intoxication in a Group of Mules: 3.5 Parts per Million Killed Mules." Sounds like a little tiny bit. Sounds like a little tiny bit to me. So I'm not sure how that compares to arsenic or other lethal toxins, but 3.5 parts per million is not a huge concentration. Well, it probably is in chemical terms, but just in answer to Commissioner Sorenson's question, it does kill mules, and mules, I think, are a little bit more harder than human beings.
Yes.
Well, according to that, you know, peer-reviewed magazine, Popular Science, it takes about six gallons McDonald's coffee for a lethal dose of caffeine.
Uh-oh.
So.
What a waste of time.
Just for, you know, future knowledge, you know, almost, you know, almost everything we ingest, you know, it's the dose that makes the poison. Water is actually lethal if you drink too much of it. And there was actually that one sad case where some radio station had a contest about chugging water where one of the competitors died. So it's, it's the dose that makes the poison, you know, and nicotine is probably a very low-dose poison compared to, as far as lethal dose goes, compared to a lot of other chemicals that we ingest in our body. And that's one of the reasons why this is so important, because in tobacco, the concentration's not that high. It still can make a kid sick if they eat cigarettes. Not that, you know, kids will get very far in eating cigarettes because it tends to make them sick and taste really bad. But the issue with these e-cigarette liquids is with the flavor, they actually are attractive. It's almost like ethylene glycol is to pets. It tastes good, but it, you know, it doesn't take but a tablespoon or so to kill a pet.
And antifreeze?
Antifreeze, yeah, sorry. For those that don't know. So it's, you know, they put a flavor in it, it tastes great, yet it's lethal, it's not in childproof packaging. So I think it's really important that we weigh in on this as the Board of Health, and I really appreciate you all bringing it forward to us. And it's part of what we talked about when we originally came up with our e-cigarette ordinance, is we didn't try to control the packaging and all that because it's too difficult at the county level, because the folks that make this aren't all located in Lane County. This really needs to be state and federal regulation of an industry to get conformity to make it a safe product. And I think FDA is one of the places where that needs to happen, so I appreciate you bringing this forward.
So don't drink antifreeze, arsenic, or this.
Yeah. Yep. Is there any further comment or questions? If not, I'll entertain a motion on the order.
Mr. Chair Stewart. Mr. Chair, I would move approval of order 15-08-25-1 in the matter of approving submission of comments to the Food and Drug Administration on the extension of the agency's authority to regulate additional tobacco products and their relative actions with this amendment that you tried to incorporate, the comments of the chair, around trying to use uniform warning labels.
Second. It's been moved and seconded and any discussion to the motion. Seeing and hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. That moves us on to item 4B, which is an update from Health and Human Services on the implementation of House Bill 3100, the Public Health Modernization Bill passed by the legislature this past session, so.
Almost up.
So I'll pass it back to Alicia again and Karen.
Thank you, Chair Bozovich. We are, we are ready to go. I'm going to pass it on to Karen for the presentation.
Good morning again, Chair Bozovich and Commissioners. We thought, since you were convened as the Board of Health today, we would take a few minutes in your agenda to give you a brief update on this important legislation that passed last session, and I anticipate we'll continue to give you updates through the rest of this year and next year on the work that the state is doing around modernization of public health, since as the Board of Health, that will impact the work that you do and certainly what we do in the department. So I'm going to start with a little bit of background, and I know through the Legislative Committee and other venues, you've been tracking on this, but in 2013, the Task Force on the Future of Public Health Services was created to develop recommendations back to the legislature, and those final recommendations were submitted. And then in the last session, the first implementation bill took the form of House Bill 3100 to start to look at the frame of what would a modern public health system in Oregon look like, what would the essential functions be, and then eventually we'll need to talk about how we would fund that. I will read necessarily through all of these recommendations, but particularly for those people who might be in the viewing public who aren't familiar, I did want to at least highlight a few of the task force recommendations. They first looked at really what are the foundation capabilities and programs that need to be present in every public health system, both the state public health system and then every local public health authority. So what are those foundational capabilities? And then once that's established, how is a state, we need to have significant and sustained funding identified to really support those foundational capabilities. Thirdly, they looked at statewide implementation of the capabilities occurring in waves over time, and we'll talk a little bit about the timeline in the future. This isn't something where the legislature just flips the switch and suddenly we have a modern public health system, but it really will be implemented over time. Local public health should have flexibility in operationalizing those capabilities. So if we have a statewide standard, then there is flexibility both within existing county health departments and then also opening the door for the possibility of regional public health services, multi-county collaboratives that might occur as well. At one point, there was some discussion about regionalizing all of public health, and the policy really backed off of that and left it more as a local option of how best to organize in different parts of the state. And then finally, looking at improvements and changes in the public health system, really structuring those around metrics and evaluation and accountability, and that includes some restructuring of the current Public Health Advisory Board. So those were a lot of the pieces in those task force recommendations. And then House Bill 3100 specifically adopted the foundational capabilities, and I have a slide in a few minutes that'll highlight exactly what those were. As I said, changed the composition and the role of the Public Health Advisory Board, that's the statewide board, beginning this coming January, and required both the state and local public health authorities to begin a process of assessing our current abilities to address those foundational capabilities and then submit a report of findings no later than January of 2017. So we're in, just beginning to embark upon that assessment process now. And then 3100 also states that local public health authorities will submit plans for implementing those capabilities no later than 2023. So again, we have some time as we move through this to be thoughtful. So this, oh, and it doesn't project as well as I would have hoped up there. This identifies the foundational capabilities, and since they're a little hard to read, I'll run through those quickly. Those are assessment and epidemiology, so that's a lot around our communicable disease program, emergency preparedness and response. The third one is communications. The fourth is policy and planning. There's a capability around leadership and organizational competencies, one around health equity and cultural responsiveness, and then finally, community partnership development. So when we talk about foundational capabilities, it's the expectation that state public health and every local public health authority will have those capabilities fully fleshed out and operationalized. And then there was also a process to identify what are the foundational programs. And then the concept is to set kind of a minimum bar that every jurisdiction has to provide of these foundational programs, and then open the opportunity that some local communities might decide they want more of some things than what that minimum standard is, and so they can certainly add to those based on their needs. And so those foundational programs are communicable disease control, environmental health, prevention and health promotion, and then access to clinical preventive services. So as we start to think about our modern public health system, it's really expected to be organized around those foundational programs. And again, local public health authorities can decide they want to do more than that. But when, my understanding is when the state and the legislature look at assigning funding levels, they're going to make sure that they can adequately fund those foundational programs. So I will let you know right now, the process, the Conference of Local Health Officials, which includes health administrators and health officers, is working through each of those foundational capabilities and really trying to get clear and specific about what we mean that public health departments should have communications. What does that actually look like? And then that's all working towards this eventual assessment that will need to be turned in by 2017. So that truly is just to give you an update and then also to give you an opportunity if there are any particular things you're concerned about or have questions about or places where, as our local public health authority, you want to make sure we provide an opportunity for you to have input, it'd be good to know that on the ordinance so we don't miss any opportunities.
Commissioner Lichen.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Karen, appreciate the update on this. I do have a question here, and it's related to item D in your, in your, the information here, it says financial and/or resource considerations. There's not a financial consideration for this update, however, future action related to implementation of HB 3100 will likely influence state revenue allocations for Lane County Public Health. Good or bad?
Well, isn't that the great question, Commissioner Lichen? I'm hoping it will influence it positively. There seems to be a strong desire to make sure that we have sufficient funding statewide to really provide the high-quality public health services that are necessary in Oregon. And, you know, I don't think it's going out on a limb to say historically the state has underfunded those services. So I'm hopeful that this attention and commitment to having the right services at the right level will result in better funding support for those, but it's still awfully early to know.
And the other question I had on the makeup of the task, was it a task force? Is that correct?
The original task force, yes.
Okay. Whether, whether people who represented, say, Southern Oregon, were they a part of this task force? Because as you know, some of these counties are prepared to give away their public health authority, and I'm not sure Oregon Health can handle all of this. And so I think it's interesting, the discussion about the regional aspect, but then the decision was maybe not move forward on that. So do you know of any, if any members of the task force? I'd like to, so many of these are Portland-centric, where they don't have these issues that the down south necessarily have, so I don't know if you, if you have information on that or if you could supply information to the board. I think I'd appreciate that.
Chair Bozovich, Commissioner Lichen, I don't remember off the top of my head, but I absolutely can send that. I remember there were Central Oregon representatives, so I know it wasn't only Portland-centric, but I don't remember about Southern Oregon, but I'll get that list out.
I appreciate that. And the last question I have is, we kind of went through this with the Justice Reinvestment Act as well from two years ago, and those commitments were broken. Are you confident that, that the makeup of the task force, that moving forward, do you believe that these commitments will stay firm? Because it seemed to me the speaker just wasn't very interested in keeping those commitments and went into another direction. I know Chair Bozovich was very involved in that, and so your assessment is, do you believe that legislature will actually maybe stay and hopefully actually stay true to the word?
Chair Bozovich, I was going to say, I hear this noise here to my right.
Actually, Commissioners, I would say if Karen can guess that, we should probably give her another job. She should come to work with county administration with you. It is always hard to tell, but I feel that the people involved and the locals are committed to this, and it's a good move. Our hope is, and we'll do our best as we work through this, to make sure that the changes stick, if you will, but.
And I would add to that, I think it will be our opportunity, and a piece, quite frankly, of why I'd like to have it on your radar as we move forward, is I think we do need to watch it carefully, and these will have significant long-term impacts for public health, and I would like to think that it will be on our list as the legislature convenes.
I wasn't expecting an answer, but I was, I just felt like it was important to get it out there in case we need to be anticipating heavy lifting in the near future, so.
Very good.
But thank you very much, and I appreciate, and really, I think what's important is I really appreciate our staff and Alicia, Karen, even the two of you in particular, just staying engaged with this. I think it's important, and I will echo what Commissioner Farr mentioned, we have an outstanding public health authority and the Health and Human Services as a whole. I really appreciate it. Thank you.
Commissioner Farr.
Thank you, Commissioner Bozovich, and thank you both for refraining from any disparaging remarks for legislators that are restricted to current legislators, and Commissioner Sorenson and I both thank you for not bringing up past legislators. And thank you, Commissioner Lichen, for the questions regarding the task force, the spreading out throughout Oregon. Looking at House Bill 3100, which is now enrolled, I see that Dr. Senator Bates was on, was one of the chief sponsors, so I would guess that anything moving forward would be under his close scrutiny, but that would be just a hazard, I guess. And also, look at the other sponsors, Lane County is pretty heavily, pretty heavily represented in the sponsorship of HB 3100. So, thank you.
So I actually testified in committee on this bill, up, you know, with the help of Mr. Tyler. There were a couple of questions about it that we were, that we were concerned about at the time, as I remember in the bill. One was whether or not they provided the ability, you know, they actually were withdrawing a portion of ORS that allowed for relinquishment of the public health authority back to the state by county. Did they fix that problem in the final version of the bill?
Chair Bozovich, you know, I have the final version with me, and I wouldn't want to give an answer without checking that. I know that there was a lot of struggle with that particular language, particularly as Douglas County was starting to, their decision-making process about whether or not to withdraw. So I know there was an interest in changing that language, but I don't know what the final version was, but I can certainly check and give.
Yeah, I was having trouble finding it quickly. The other question was, there was some issue about creating almost a dual process to the chip, where it was just going to create a bunch of extra reporting that was basically almost the same thing we have to do to develop a chip and then keep tabs of the Community Health Improvement Plan. Was that fixed in the bill, or are we still doing two processes that report basically the same thing?
Chair Bozovich, I think at this point, it seems like that duplication has been avoided. You know, at this, we're still at a pretty high level, so there's time to see how it will play out. The other process that's parallel for most counties and certainly the state is the accreditation process. As you know, we're in the process of applying for accreditation, the state already has, and that also requires jurisdictions to go through a lot of those processes. So the idea at this point is to try and have as much alignment as possible so that what people do for those processes can just be funneled through to kind of count for these things as well.
Excellent, good. Any other questions? Well, thank you for the update on that. So that moves us on to item 4C, which is the fourth reading of ordinance 1505 in the matter of amending Lane Code Chapter 9 to address tobacco sale regulation issues related to discount pricing, proximity of sales, locations serving children, and fees and penalties. And we have Ms. Hayes again.
Phil.
Or is it?
I feel very important here as I take my time, Chair Bozovich, to introduce Karen, who's going to do the presentation.
Thank you.
And Commissioners, we have certainly been talking about this a lot recently, so I did not prepare a lengthy presentation, and at the same time, I'm conscious we may have some viewers who are new to the conversation. So if it's your pleasure, I thought I would just briefly go through what the four main areas are where there are proposed amendments and then take any questions that you might have. Does that make sense?
That works.
Okay, so we'll go through these pretty quickly. By way of background, as I said, we've been working on this issue of tobacco retail licensing for quite some time as part of your work on the Community Health Improvement Plan and then the county's strategic plan. Last December, you adopted a tobacco retail licensing program for unincorporated Lane County. And then through the implementation of that process last May, you asked for an update on implementation and stakeholder feedback. And so as a result of that report, you asked us to prepare a series of options for your cons- consideration for amending the ordinance. Since then, we have four specific areas that are proposed amendments in the draft ordinance that's attached for this reading. The first is in the area of coupons and price discounts. So your current code prohibits retailers from honoring or accepting discounts or coupons for tobacco purchase. And in light of our earlier agenda item, I will remind people that tobacco in your ordinance is defined to also include e-cigarettes, so wherever we're using tobacco, it includes both. So these amendments would delete that particular section K through N of 9.753 and delete that prohibition. The second area for amendments is in the area of proximity to schools and youth-serving organizations. And then what will we do, grandfathering is the term we've been using here, for those retailers who are currently located close to those, to schools. So the current code prohibits new retailers within 1,000 feet of establishments serving children, and that's defined fairly broadly in the code. It does allow for current retailers to stay in their current site. However, if they were to sell their store, the license is not transferable to the subsequent owner. So these amendments that are before you today would limit the 1,000-foot restriction only to public schools, and also would allow all current tobacco retailer locations to be grandfathered into their current location. So even if they sell, that location could continue to be licensed to sell tobacco. The third area was in community education. Again, your current code has, we're really talking about two words in the definition or the description of how the license revenue, the application fee revenue can be spent. And it allows right now for that to pay for tobacco retailer and community education. And there was concern raised that by allowing for that revenue to be spent on community education, it could open the door for this program to be defined as a tax. And so this amendment deletes the words "and" "community." It doesn't change how much revenue is collected, but what it can be spent on. And then the fourth area was in fines and penalties. Your current code establishes a schedule of fines and suspensions that are progressive. Basically, the, you know, each additional violation gets a higher fine and more quickly leads towards suspension or revocation. And all of that is within a five-year look-back period, so any violation basically doesn't drop off until five years have passed. In these amendments, we've modeled the language on what OLCC does, so that look-back period instead of five years is two years. And the fine and suspension schedule has been changed to mirror what OLCC has. And then you also asked that we add a reference in the code to the existing penalty for clerks who sell, so we've included that also. So that's an overview of what these amendments are, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Commissioner Sorenson.
On the first slide you had was about the coupons. I guess it was, yeah, there it was, that slide. It says coupons and price discounts. And first of all, are these slides on the website, county website?
No, they are not, but I'm happy to provide them if you would like.
Okay. That would be helpful to the public trying to follow this. Secondly, with regard to the issue here of tobacco as distinct from e-cigarette. You mentioned, I think in your presentation, that this not only would apply to cigarettes in the traditional form that we have in cigarettes, but it would also apply to e-cigarettes. And I think the testimony was pretty overwhelming that the retailers were concerned about cigarette sales at their sort of community stores and stores. And I'm wondering why we would include e-cigarettes when the testimony was all about traditional cigarettes.
Chair Bozovich and Commissioner Sorenson, the definition that is in the code that was adopted back in December defines a tobacco product as any product that is made from or derived from tobacco, which contains nicotine or similar substances. And then it goes on to basically say, including but not limited to a cigarette, a cigar, pipe tobacco, chewing tobacco, snuff, snus, or snooze, or an electronic smoking device. And basically, specifically then says it does not include cessation products. My recollection of your discussion at the time, and you all may remember it better than I do, but there was a desire to be able to regulate all of these products that you felt were dangerous for young people. And so this was a strategy to keep young people from having access to both cigarettes as well as e-cigarettes. And it was a companion piece to your regulation saying that no one under 18 could purchase e-cigarettes. And I remember, perhaps Chair Bozovich in particular, talking about how the tobacco industry often will make slight changes, and so trying to cast a wide net in how you define that. That's my memory of the conversation.
Well, the good news is we cast a wide net. The bad news is we're getting ready to repeal part of that net, and I'm just wondering if you have given any thought to a definition in the ordinance of the term tobacco so that we could retain the prohibition against use of coupons for cigarettes, which is what the dominant testimony was about and what I believe at least three commissioners wanted make a change on. But I'm just drawing that narrow issue of, well, there wasn't a whole lot of testimony about the need for coupons for e-cigarette sales.
And Chair Bozovich, Commissioner Sorenson, we absolutely could bring back that language on the coupons if the board would like to be able to narrow that restriction. Whatever is the pleasure of the board, that would not be difficult to bring you different language.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments on the first half? Commissioner Farr.
Thank you, Commissioner Bozovich. You know, when we passed the tobacco ordinance last year, December? December. When I signed it, the ordinance. You know, I was adamant about the reasons that I was interested in moving forward with the ordinance, and I remain just as adamant about the reasons. And I'm not going to belabor it too much right now. But you know, we heard comments earlier from, let's see, comments earlier regarding the amount of money we spend on tobacco-related illnesses in Lane County, $258 million, I think was thrown out. And up to 215 calls a month on nicotine poisoning. I mean, these are pretty astounding numbers that we're hearing. And every call, you know, every dollar spent on medical services based upon cigarettes and nicotine products are dollars that could be spent elsewhere. Could be spent on public safety, could be spent on recreation, could be spent on going on holidays, could be spent on eating nutritious food or opening a new farmer's market across the blocks there. You know, every dollar that we spend on that is money that could be spent elsewhere. So it's important that we move forward as strongly as we possibly can and lay down the rules as strongly as we can in Lane County. And I remain just as strongly supportive of our tobacco ordinance as I did when we passed it. The changes that we're looking at today are reasonable in nature for a couple of reasons. You know, one of them is that if a retailer is only a few feet away from another retailer and they have a different set of rules that they're operating under, then, you know, that makes it, you know, a little bit more difficult for people to play, to operate their business on an even footing with their competitors, and it is a competitive industry. So if I vote yes on this, these particular changes, a lot of it will be based upon the fact that the men and women sitting in this room, some of them are back here today, who have testified to us before us in the past, have reasonable requests that we don't create an unfair business environment in Lane County for them. And I understand that, I listen to that. Now, if I vote no on this particular ordinance, the changes to the ordinance, it'll be because I still am as adamant as I was, that I don't want kids to start smoking. I wish my parents had stopped before they did stop, before smoking killed them. My children wish that three of their four grandchildren, grandparents hadn't ever started smoking, and I wish they hadn't started smoking too, because perhaps they'd be around to see their great-grandchildren being born right now. You know, it really is a sad, sad situation, and I'm not the only person. In fact, I'm probably, there's probably not one person in this room that has not been affected closely in their family by the effect of nicotine and cigarettes, the addictive nature of nicotine and the carcinogen nature of cigarettes. You know, it's a, it's not an epidemic, you know, it's a horror that we're living with. It's like, have you ever read the book Watership Down? Anybody read Watership Down? It's about the rabbits who live next to the farmers who snare them, and they live with it. The snares are just a part of being alive, because every now and then one of us goes away, we don't know where they went. Well, we do know where they went. I know where my mom and dad went, I know where my mother-in-law went. You know, they went to cigarettes. And the snare, the Watership Down snare that got them, that so many of us have kind of pushed behind us and we don't talk about, we don't listen to, we don't hear about, you know, we would prefer not to think about it. The snare's there, you know, and it's out there, and if you put your head in the wrong hole, it's going to get you. And it's got every one of us. Some of our relatives have been gotten by that Watership Down snare. And it's something that I'm really, yeah, I'm struggling with my vote on this one, quite frankly, because I really truly understand the business nature, and I really truly understand that by restricting the use of coupons, by restricting the grandfathering clause, you know, that it has an effect on local businesses. That being said, I can't ignore the fact that we're living with this horrible murderer right among us, right in this room here. Commissioner Bozovich talked about the smoke that we couldn't avoid over the weekend, and it was unavoidable. Back in the old field burning days, we couldn't avoid the days of the field burning smoke hit Lane County and got sucked in. But we can avoid this. We can avoid sucking this stuff into our lungs. And we can avoid kids getting started on sweet-tasting stuff so that later they're going to suck it into their lungs. We can avoid that, and we have to do everything that we possibly can do. And I challenge anybody in this room who disagrees with me, that we have to do anything that we can do to prevent kids from smoking, and anything that we can do to get people who do smoke today to stop smoking today, if possible. So that being said, once again, I am struggling with my vote on this, because a large part of me says, we have a business decision here, but a larger part of me says, you know, we have people dying, and people who haven't started smoking yet, people who haven't started smoking yet will die from cigarettes, who haven't even started yet. So that's where my struggle is today, and I thank you for your presentation. Thank you, Dr. Kuzman, for your presentation. Thank you for, thank you, Kristi, for the times we spend in my office talking about this. I think you and I have kind of a kindred spirit on where we're going with this. And it's, you know, my yes vote is for the business people in this room. My no vote is for all the kids, all the people who haven't smoked, started smoking yet, who are in fact going to die from cigarettes, even though they haven't started yet.
Commissioner Lichen.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. First of all, I really want to say thank you to all of those who took time out of their day to come and testify, really since day one, on this issue. And then I would really like, want to say thank you to our staff, and thank you very much for working with this, on this. As you know, I think since day one, I expressed my opinion and where I felt we should be on this. I think what's key here is that this ordinance, if we decide to pass this today, this ordinance will basically affect about 25% of Lane County residents. I mean, 75% of the residents in the business community in particular will not be affected. And really, from the get-go, that was my whole issue, is I felt like if we were going to be truly effective, we should really have looked at this more from a global perspective and not just from a micro perspective. And I think that's what occurred in the very beginning. So I think what has happened here is that as we've gone through this discussion, this is where I want to say thank you to staff. I think what you did is you worked with us, and I think what we have now is something that's a bit more balanced. This does not take away from my own personal feeling about smoking, and especially when it comes to our children. I mean, this is the part that, and it still baffles me today when I see high-school-aged kids with a cigarette in their mouth. I honestly, I'm looking at this and there is so much information out there, I don't understand this. So I think what we have here today is, I think what this does is kind of, really sets in motion. And I think what's key is that I think staff should really be, really step up and really realize what we've done here is that Lane County has taken a step and has shown leadership throughout the state. And if, which I think will come back in the short session, and I think what you're going to see now is more of a statewide perspective on this particular issue, but this really goes to you, staff, and really say thank you very much in what you've brought to us. And so I think moving forward, I will support this, because I think what it does is allows those struggling businesses in rural Lane County to continue to move forward, and I think that that's going to be important. I think Commissioner Farr said it perfectly. I know the business there, right off the Mohawk River. I mean, it's, I, believe me, I've been in that market many times over the years, and you're exactly right, a half-mile down the road, you can, at a, it's, I think it's a 76 station, I think, if my memory serves me correctly, Chevron, one of the two, you can go and buy cigarettes. And you can buy the, you can buy the, what the original, the original ordinance entailed would have caused really, to me, economic harm. So I think this is a good first step. I appreciate the work that you put into this. And again, thanks to all the citizens throughout Lane County who testified on this, pro, con, whatever, I think the information was extremely viable moving forward, but great job to staff. Thank you so much.
Commissioner Stewart.
Thanks, Mr. Chair. And I don't know if I have much more to add from what Commissioner Lichen said, but I'll, and I may repeat some of it, but first of all, I want to thank staff for bringing this back and being helpful with trying to adjust it. I think the critical piece for me at this point is around fairness. I know that this is a goal, one of our goals, as part of the Community Health Improvement Plan, to reduce the ability, you know, hopefully reduce the number of our youth using tobacco products. And the piece that wraps around the fairness, and Commissioner Lichen already stated, but I'll restate it is, is that this really only applies to the unincorporated folks in our community, as he said, about 25% of our county. And I understand the passion of our, my colleagues, and I'm there with them and would support us working towards a county-wide ordinance that's fair for everybody, and then we wouldn't have this conversation. So I appreciate taking the time to try to adjust this so that hopefully our folks that are in business today, they can continue to be in business without risking putting them out of business. So I think that the tweaks that we've made can make that happen and still show that we're concerned about this. This is a priority, and we can move forward with potentially some, a county-wide ordinance. I just happened to be in a meeting yesterday, late in the day, with the city manager at Cottage Grove and also the school district superintendent from South Lane School District. And I just, at the end of our meeting, I took the opportunity to ask him, I said, what are your feelings and comments, are you aware of them? Both of them were well aware of them. As you know, I think we had representatives from South Lane School District that came and testified, encouraged us to adopt this ordinance. And also, the city of Cottage Grove, I think, has been very receptive as considering this. The city manager said that, you know, you're correct, Fay, that the tweaks that you have made help it be more palatable within the city limits, because some of the things that were included, you know, quite frankly, the cities are going to look at them and say, we can't do this. It's going to negatively impact 75% of our businesses that are located next to parks and all these other places where youth happen to frequent. And so I think that we're on the right path, and I believe that, he said that the only inclusion that he could see at this point that might be considered including in the ordinance was to ban it from, ban the use of tobacco products or smoking within parks. So I think we're getting closer, and I'm hopeful that our staff will continue to make that effort. The superintendent, you know, reluctantly she understood the balance. I think that she would prefer that we don't make the changes. She was honest about it, but understood that at least, you know, 1,000 feet from the schools that she has control over, that's helpful to. that, that she has control over, that's helpful to, to her, to, and a beneficial. So I think we're on the right track, and I, I'm cautiously optimistic that, you know, staff will work with the cities, and will be able to consider a countywide implementation of this ordinance, hopefully soon, sooner than later.
Chair Bozovich, Commissioner Stewart, I just wanted to assure the whole board, and you in particular, that those conversations with the cities are very important, and from a public health perspective, we absolutely want to have the policy be countywide. And a lot of those have been on hiatus while you're working out your final, final language, but between the staff at Public Health and Dr. Ledke and myself, we would anticipate circling back around to all of those cities, once we have final language.
Thank you.
Thank you. So, I had a quick question, and this is relative to the, looking at further issues in trying to prevent smoking in minors and smoking cessation in general. We have a work discussion, I believe, on an update on the Community Health Improvement Plan coming up, and we're gonna discuss strategies and all that. Can you kind of just update us on what's coming?
I'd be happy to, Chair Bozovich. September 22nd, I believe, is the Tuesday that we've requested, at your suggestion, a work session. At this point, we're thinking it's gonna be about two hours, so to really give you sufficient time to not only get an update on where the community is with the Community Health Improvement Plan, and specifically where county staff is with the specific priorities you adopted, but also provide enough opportunity to talk about some of the other issues that have been raised at the last several Board of Health meetings. There was a topic around tobacco use in parks, or tobacco-free county properties. So, kind of looking at all of the other parts of the Community Health Improvement Plan, and giving you the opportunity, if there are some other things that you would identify for work in this next year, that you have the chance to do that. So that'll be on the 22nd of September.
Excellent. I just wanted to bring that out, that this is not the end of the process, if we do adopt this, these amendments to the ordinance, the original ordinance today, under this ordinance. I also just wanna make note that, as folks came and testified, it was based on the ordinance we had published at that time, which included a definition of tobacco that was all-inclusive, including e-cigarettes. So when retailers were referring to the unfair playing field of, of having, you know, two different retailers separated by less than a half mile, that had different rules relative to coupons and pricing, et cetera, and they referred to tobacco, they were using our definition of that. So to construe that it was only cigarettes they were talking about, I think is a false construction, because they were testifying to an ordinance that had a definition of tobacco that was all-inclusive. So I just wanted to make that clear. Is there any other questions for staff? If not, I'll entertain a motion on the ordinance.
Commissioner Stewart?
Mr. Chair, I would move approval of ordinance 15-05 in the matter of amending Lane Code, Chapter 9, to address tobacco sale regulation issues related to discount pricing, proximity of sales to locations serving children, and fees penalties.
Second? They're moved in second. Discussion of the motion. Commissioner Farr?
Thank you, Commissioner Bozovich. You know, I'm looking, skipping through some advertising, some from a local publication fairly recently. There's a coupon booklet that they put out, it's, I'm not gonna say which publication it is, but it's a coupon booklet from one of our weeklies here locally. And it's very expensive coupons in there. You know, some of them, I see that Cornucopia could only afford one-eighth of a page, black and white, for their coupon. And many of the, many of the advertisers in there, some of them go up to a quarter of a page, there are a couple that are half a page. But the full color, on the inside, first page that you open after the, after the, first, after the cover, a full color, beautiful, all-natural, you know, we use all-natural, but our cars are natural, and the paper this is printed on is natural. Full color, full page, the biggest coupon in the entire booklet, offering a $20 coupon, up to $20, $20 in coupons, is for American Spirit cigarettes. Then you flip to the very back page of that same advertising booklet, which is 16 pages from one of our local weeklies, that the very back page is a full color camel. Now, it's not cigarettes, it's these things that you tuck in your mouth, nicotine, that you tuck in your mouth, which, even though it's not smoked, it is a carcinogen also. Full color, so two full color, that is a quarter of the entire booklet, is devoted full color to cigarettes and tobacco product, including the largest coupon in, in the entire booklet. Now, how do we curb this? How do we, you know, it's pretty attractive. I'm looking at this one on American Spirit, it's lovely. I mean, I couldn't take a photograph that pretty. And I, I couldn't do any marketing that's that effective. I stopped and looked at it, and it's beautiful. All-natural, which gotta be good, right? You know, it's, 100% is used in here at some point, you know, it's so, it's, but it's not all-natural, you know, the cigarettes aren't all-natural by any means. But, and I'm not faulting American Spirit, any more than I'm faulting any other cigarette brand. And I'm not faulting cigarettes, any more than I'm faulting any other nicotine purveyor. You know, it's just, it's, it's in our community, and it's, like I said earlier, it's something that we try to hide. We try to forget that our parents and our grandparents aren't gonna see their grandchildren and great-grandchildren because of these things. And if I'm gonna, you know, if I'm gonna put my money where my mouth is, we're gonna, I'm gonna make, help make some of the hard decisions that sometimes aren't as popular as they may be universally. But in fairness, what's fair? You know, if, what is fair? What is fair? Is it, is it fair that my soon-to-be-born grandchild isn't going to see their grandparents, their great-grandparents? I don't think that's fair, because they wouldn't be that old, you know? I mean, they're pre-yung. So it's, that's not fair to me. And the fairness is, is far more than, than can I sell something that, can I, am I hammered in selling something that somebody down the street is selling? You know, to me, fairness extends far beyond that. So I'm still struggling with my vote on this, and I probably will not make my mind up until, until Mr. Murkiewicz says. Commissioner Farr?
Commissioner Sorenson?
Thank you very much. You know, one of the interesting things about our democracy is, we let certain people vote, and certain people can't vote. The big dividing line on the voting is the age of the person. There are other restrictions on who can vote, but in most countries worldwide, the voting age is either 21 or 18. And there have been proposals to allow children to vote, and on the premise that they're affected by the decisions that, that are made in, in a given democracy, and so maybe we should let them vote. But most of those proposals have been rejected for a variety of reasons. And in recent years, when the US and other major countries in the world lowered the voting age from 21 to 18, it was mainly out of respect for the fact that people that are 18, and 19, and 20 can get conscripted into the military of their country. So the premise was, well, if they're old enough to be conscripted into the military, they might be old enough to vote. But today, we're, we're in one of these decisions where we're talking about rolling back, or mitigating, or doing something different to our ordinance that we enacted to protect children, but the voice of those children politically is not heard, because they don't have a right to vote yet. And I'm not really here to recommend that we change all of that in one fell swoop, or even propose it. But what I am pointing out is that children are the ones that are most affected by these decisions. So with the, with the multi-billion dollars of marketing that the tobacco industry worldwide puts into trying to keep kids addicted, or get them addicted, or increase the nicotine content, or increase the addictive qualities, let the children think that they're playing with a toy, or, or having some candy. And, and one of the methods that they use for the marketing, since they've been banned from, from television advertising, at least in the US, is with these coupons. So the major issue today is whether we're gonna allow these coupons, or not allow these coupons. And clearly, from what was reported, you know, the amendment that, it's before the board that we're about to pass, that I won't be voting for, is to allow those coupons, and allow the, the use, the major use of the multinational tobacco industries to use their main technique for addicting these children, and keep their marketing, and keep their product going, even though most people know that ultimately, those products kill people. So I, I just think it's, it's bad on, on the level of adopting a forward-looking ordinance that others would look to, and then, and turn around and change it. It's also bad in that we have the authority to deal with our border issue by enacting an ordinance that is countywide, and would affect all retailers equally. And that would be a really substantial use of our power to help children through our power. So thank you for this opportunity to voice my opposition.
Commissioner Stewart?
Thanks, Mr. Chair. And, you know, I, I respect the comments that were made, but quite frankly, this ordinance, the way it is today, doesn't stop those ads. It doesn't stop the 250,000 people that live within Eugene and Springfield from being able to see those ads, and be able to use those coupons within the stores. I, I appreciate that. And the, the point I'm trying to represent here is, is that I represent rural Lane County, and they're hanging on by a thread, folks. Stores are, have seen businesses, lumber companies closed down, they've seen their businesses, you know, fall in half or less, they're struggling to make it. And I guess my question is, to me, is, is that, you know, yeah, we might have a minimal impact on 100,000 people with this ordinance, probably mostly a negative impact. From the standpoint, we're probably not gonna stop people from living in, around the, outside the Cottage Grove, from driving into the Cottage Grove markets and purchasing these products with this ordinance. So they're not gonna be stopped from being present within our school system down there, or within the ability of our youth. You know, the real answer here is really to tackle something, is countywide. And I, I guess that's what I'm respectfully asking my colleagues to do here, is to understand that, you know, I'm not opposed to doing something countywide, and trying to make meaningful impact, but it has to be fair to everybody, and I think equally represented. And unfortunately, you know, to, you know, to let our passions out on this, I think we're being just a little bit misguided at this point, as to really what the true impacts are gonna be. And maybe if we take the approach that, yeah, maybe this might impact one, or 10, or 15 youth from not using it, I guess that, that's a plus, and maybe that's what we should be trying to do. But I think we could be more effective if we understood that, let's try to do something countywide, and not have some of these adverse impacts that we're experiencing, and let's not, you know, put rural Lane County, East Lane County, and West Lane County into any more jeopardy and, and difficulty than we've already placed them upon, or the federal government, or whoever we deemed has, has cast a die, and, and they're, seeing their communities, you know, essentially go from being pretty prosperous down to, we're hanging on by a thread. And that's, that's what I'm trying to address here. And I, I don't wanna be disrespectful, I think all of your comments are right on the mark. I, I don't want my, my kids thinking that they wanna start vaping, because they wanna have a Girl Scout mint kooky flavor to it. I mean, I, I don't wanna see that, and I don't want any other kids to. But then I also wanna be respectful of, what are we truly achieving here, and where, what are some of the negative impacts? And I, I think we can do a better job. And I'm committed to making sure that we do a better job. And that was, you know, if I go back, clear back to my comments, probably a year, year and a half ago, that's why I really was hoping that we could do this countywide, if cities would support before we enacted, I don't, we wouldn't be in this position, in, in quite honesty. So, you know, I guess that, that'll be a learning lesson for me, to be more adamant that, let's, let's do a little better job on the process end.
Mr. Chair, I'll pass. I think my, my comments have been very consistent since day one. Thank you.
Yeah, and I just wanna appreciate everybody's comments, and, and, you know, I think when we talk about what's fair, we have to think about the full unintended consequences of an action we're taking. And I think Commissioner Stewart outlined this very well, there is a consequence if we leave the ordinance as is. And that is, we will set up a situation where rural, unincorporated shops will have a considerable disadvantage competitively with shops that are inside city limits. And the result could be closures of those rural stores, which is gonna result in unemployment. You know, and I've talked previously about the effects of poverty and health outcomes, that's actually a bigger indicator of health outcomes than tobacco uses. I've also, you know, one of the things we're charged as a board, in our land use portion of our powers, is to try and reduce vehicle miles traveled. So we start having the mom-and-pop rural grocery stores shut down, then we're requiring people to drive in and out of urban centers to get the, the one item they need to finish cooking dinner. So we're adding to the vehicle miles traveled, which is an issue as far as health concerns, and that's why it's built into some of our land use rules. And in general, just food availability out in rural areas, you know, and all that. So there, there's a whole bunch of unintended consequences, health-wise, to leaving this, this way. The way to deal with this is, and we noted, we're gonna start this conversation in less than a month, of what should we do maybe in a countywide? And we're also gonna have an update here in our regular board meeting on our legislative past session, and start thinking about upcoming legislation, legislative efforts this board would like to, to go after. But I strongly support the idea of moving forward on a countywide ordinance. But we need to do that in collaboration with our city partners, instead of trying to have us just dictate to them. I think we need to move forward together. We saw last summer what happens when one jurisdiction tries to dictate to another policy with the sickly ordinance in City of Eugene. I don't wanna repeat that effort. So I, I'm all for moving forward on a countywide ordinance that could contain some of these provisions, and eliminate those, those competitive issues that we're setting up. And also, maybe start thinking a little bit further down the road. Commissioner Sorenson brought up the whole issue of age of purchase. And I would fully support a countywide ordinance that moved, that moved over a three-year phase in, the age of, of legal purchase of tobacco products, as we define them broadly, to 21. And I think that would have a whole lot more impact on, on kids accessing tobacco products than some of the coupon pricing and other issues we're talking about here today. So I'm gonna support the amendment. It's amendments I actually suggested when we adopted the ordinance last December. In fact, almost verbatim, exactly what I suggested last December, because I saw these issues in advance, and the emotions of the moment in trying to deal with kids having access to e-cigarettes, overrode waiting a month to try and correct the ordinance. So here we are, nine months later, fixing the things that, that I suggested nine months ago. So, and we could've maybe just gone over to another reading, and passed it in January, and we'd have been done. So I, I appreciate staff for coming back with all this. I appreciate their understanding of the concerns, the legal constraints, everything from the, the issue about, and community, and, and the issue of, of the state's preemption on local taxation of tobacco products, to, you know, the, the location standards, and the grandfathering, and the, and the possible takings issues that come with making a store have no value. So I, I really appreciate everything that everybody's put into this. I appreciate the, the emotion that's around it. You know, I, you know, Commissioner Farr is perfectly correct. I don't think there's a person in this room that hasn't had somebody affected by cancer related to, or heart disease related to tobacco products. So, you know, it's, it's a serious issue. I'll be voting in support of the ordinance, because I think it's the correct thing to do, to establish that level playing field right now, go as far as we can with unincorporated regulations, and then look to further steps to go countywide, where we can level the playing field and take further action in the future to prevent... playing field and take further action in the future to prevent minors from taking up this addictive and destructive habit. So with that, any further comments to the motion? Seeing, hearing none, this is an ordinance, will you call the roll, please?
Commissioner Sorenson?
No.
Commissioner Stewart?
Aye.
Aye.
Commissioner Liken?
Aye.
Commissioner Farr?
No.
Commissioner Bozovic? Motion passes 3-2 with Commissioners Farr and Sorenson in dissent. Thank you very much. And that ends our business for the joint meeting of the Board of Health and Board of Commissioners. I'm going to adjourn that meeting. And I'm going to call to order the regular meeting of the Board of Commissioners for Tuesday, August 25th. And the first item of business is adjustments to the agenda. Are there any adjustments to the agenda? I will note, we do need an executive session today. Seeing and hearing none, that moves us on to public comments. We did have some people address the board prior to the joint meeting, but if there's somebody that wishes to address the board in our regular meeting, I'll take those comments now. No one wishes to address the board? Then we'll move on to Commissioners' response to public comments and/or other issues in remonstrance. Commissioner Liken?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I must say, this is one of those times when it's, I feel very proud to be born and raised in Roseburg, Oregon. And so I just want to, again, make mention to National Guard Guardsman Alex Scarlatos, who's actually, his parents actually live in Roseburg, and he's from Roseburg, and for really being what I call one of the, as we now know, four. Because one of the individuals is actually in the hospital, but one of the four heroes, I will flat-out call them heroes, had potentially stopped in absolutely horrible situation on a train in France, given the combinations like he was from the French president. And he and two of the individuals involved, not even hesitating but stopping this individual that the French government is calling absolute terrorism. And so I just want to say thank you very much to Guardsman Scarlatos for his involvement in that. And also, I want to say thank you to Tim Boyle, who is the CEO of Columbia Sportswear. I don't know if people are aware of this, but Tim authorized his plane to go pick up the mothers of the three, to make sure that they were in France. And here, so he, his plane flew the mothers of the three individuals from the United States to France, because they were unable to secure a flight to be in Paris, to be part of their son's accommodations. So this is a big, so of course Columbia Sportswear, located in Oregon, another Oregon company involved in this, so, but a big thank you to Tim to authorize that. What an incredible gesture to, on his part. But pretty incredible just to, when you read and witness, or read and hear about it, and even from eyewitnesses, about the lack of hesitation that went in, as we know now, four of the individuals. One is actually a college professor, who was also involved and suffered a wound and is currently in hospital. But thank you to the three, the four Americans involved in that, who took down this act of terrorism that the French government has now proclaimed that was an actual act of terrorism. So a big thank you to all four. Thank you.
Commissioner Farr?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. A couple of things I wanted to mention today. The first thing, I'm going to pass these photos along to my fellow commissioners, and keep one myself. You know, over the weekend, our, the Nightingale Health Sanctuary moved their homeless camp, their encampment, from behind the MLK Boulevard, behind our behavioral health facility, over to River Road and Northwest Expressway. This is a picture of the campus, it's now been set up. And if you take a look at this, it looks pretty orderly. It looks, all the residences, we'll call them residences, because that's indeed what they are, are very well ordered, they're all up off the ground, very neat. And you'll notice that there are hoop houses over the top of the tents, providing additional shelter for the people who are living in the tents. That's a little bit about the camp, about the Nightingale Health Sanctuary camp, which is on county property. It is administered basically by the city of Eugene, but the nonprofit Nightingale Health Sanctuary are the ones who are actually monitoring the daily operations of the camp. If you take a look at this, it's very different to some of the other encampments that you may encounter. Very strict health rules involved here, they operate on rules that were actually prescribed by our health department. And really, if you go in there, the people are happy living there. And in fact, this one camp, which has now been relocated, 17 of the people who have been living here, who were living here, have been relocated into permanent housing. Now that's what we want. We want people to move through into permanent housing. And we need to find different ways to provide permanent housing, but this is a really positive thing. Mr. Mokrheyski, one thing I like about the new location is a mixed blessing, but I do like the fact that it's front and center. People have an opportunity to drive by, thousands of people daily, sometimes thousands of people in an hour, go by and see what a well-organized, secure, safe and healthy camp, relatively healthy camp, looks like. And it really is, it really is a testimony to what can work as far as helping provide living accommodations for homeless people and helping people to move through homelessness. So thank you very much for that. Now, the second thing I'll talk about is regarding our Operation 365, we are housing homeless veterans. I've had an opportunity to talk this week to landlords who have given veterans opportunities to live in their rental units, some of them by reducing first, last and security, allowing for monthly payments on their residences, some of them foregoing some of the background checks that occasionally are involved. But I've had a chance to talk to a whole lot of landlords this week and thank them personally for the fact that they are stepping forward and helping with the homeless veterans issue, that, you know, by the end of November this year, our goal is to have housed 365 veterans, one for every day in the year. So we're well on our way to accomplishing that goal, and I really expect by December 1st, we'll be able to say, we made it. We housed 365 homeless veterans. The third thing I'd like to talk about is SNAP, that is the new term for what used to be called food stamps. We, a lot of families in Land County rely on food stamps for nutrition, to buy food that otherwise they would, may not be able to buy. And it's, you can spend the food stamps in stores, and the money that is spent, the food stamp money that's spent is recirculated in our local economy, particularly when it's spent with local vendors. And over the weekend, I had a chance to Sarah Majewski and our economics department, or economy, can, help me with this, Ms. Mokrheyski, it's economical.
Economic, community and economic development, we're stumbling over here.
Thank you. We presented a check to Farmers Market for $5,000. $5,000 is for their SNAP matching program, where people who have SNAP, and Land County, due to the efforts of Food for Land County and Oregon Food Bank and others, has a very high rate of people who are eligible for food stamps, actually receiving the food stamps and the SNAP benefits, and spending them locally. Farmers Market has a matching program where, when people use the SNAP coupons to buy, they're somewhat more expensive every now and then than what you can buy in supermarkets, but produce, which is locally grown and nutritious, then they'll match it. And so people get twice, double their money for it. So I'd like to thank everyone in Land County for the $5,000 that was put into the SNAP, the Farmers Market program over the weekend. And the final thing, if you indulge me for just one second, I'm going to take a drink of Eugene tap water. Mmm. Wow, that is better than soda. I happen to fizz mine, because I have one of those little fizzy machines at home. This is Eugene tap water, and I can't buy anything better than that. There is no money that can buy anything better than Eugene or Springfield tap water. All comes from the Mackenzie River. Springfield's well fields are Mackenzie River water. Eugene's happens to be drawn from the Mackenzie River. And yesterday, I had a chance to talk with Janine Perisi from E-Web, and they are starting a program right now. So you can have your own bottle, or you can have this bottle here, and it's called "A Partnership to Cultivate a Cultural Preparedness." Now, here at the Board of Commissioners, we talk a lot about being prepared for disaster. One of the most important, probably the most important way to prepare for disaster, is to have water on hand, drinking water on hand. And it's recommended that everybody has three gallons of water. That is enough for three days, one gallon per day, per person. That's what your drinking needs and your sanitation needs. This is a three gallon, this is a three-day supply of water for me, should we run out of flowing water in our taps. Better than drinking out of the back of the toilet, you know, but, so keep fresh water on hand. We've talked about it quite often, whether it be an earthquake, a fire, a flood, other things that may interrupt our water supply. Keep three gallons per person on hand, that's three-day supply per person in your household. Also, a gallon per pet. They are less fussy about drinking out of the back of the toilet, by the way, than you teens are and should be. So thank you, Janine, for bringing this to me yesterday, and thank you for this, which we all should be drinking lots of every single day.
Commissioner Sorenson?
Thank you very much. This past weekend, the Land County Farmers Market celebrated the 100th birthday of the Farmers Market in downtown Eugene. Originally started as a Eugene Producers Market, and was in place for 70 or so years, and then it went by the wayside for a while and then came back as the, in its current form, Land County Farmers Market. And I just wanted to thank Commissioner Farr, and Sarah Case, and others from the county involved in presenting the Farmers Market with a check for $5,000 to assist in their efforts. I think the celebration was good, in part because of the tremendous economic engine that the Farmers Market spins off, and is a vital part of our food and beverage economy. And as has been mentioned, the Farmers Market, as well as stores, regular grocery stores, are eligible to receive SNAP benefits. And SNAP is the acronym for the program formerly known as food stamps. So it provides food, or access to food, to people that don't have enough money to buy food. And a very large percentage, maybe 20% of Land County, is receiving those benefits. So it's a very significant population. And I think part of the excitement associated with the 100th anniversary is the fact that there's a lot of research that shows that people will buy better food, they will eat better, they will have better health outcomes, if they increase the amount of fresh fruits and vegetables that they can buy at Farmers Markets. So Land County Farmers Market is working on an effort to double the amount of food that can be purchased with SNAP benefits, because they're federal. That's what federal tax dollars are partially being used for. But if we can have a local match and double the amount of food that people can buy, fresh food, good food, then it won't just benefit the farmers who sell it, it'll also benefit the people that are struggling to feed their families on the SNAP benefits. So I think it's a great partnership, and I'm glad our economic development staff is involved with the development of Farmers Markets, not just the Land County Farmers Market in downtown Eugene, but Farmers Markets throughout the county. Thanks.
Thanks. Any other remonstrance? Seeing none, we'll move on to emergency business. Any emergency business today?
No.
Thank you. Then we'll move to the consent calendar, which is routine items that we passed in a single motion. If folks want to see what, the details of what we're passing, they can go to our website and click on the view materials for each item. And this will be passed without discussion. Is there a motion to approve the consent calendar?
Mr. Chair, I'd move approval to consent calendar.
Second?
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And he opposed. Motion passes unanimously. And I just want to make a quick note to our district attorney who walked in the door, or I guess acting district attorney, or what's the interim, or is it, I guess it's officially district attorney.
You're either a district attorney or you're not.
Yeah. I get confused about these appointed positions, yeah. But just that, you know, part of our consent calendar was to add another staffer to her office, and part of that was because of actions she took upon assuming the role of district attorney, and how she backfilled her position and reductions in cost, and managed to free up that amount of money and fill that position. So she's already making positive change there and increasing our ability to prosecute folks and hold them accountable in Land County. So I just want to appreciate the efforts of Ms. Perlo. So, thank you. So with that, we'll move on to county administration announcements.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. You covered one of the things I wanted to point out, so thank you for sharing that information about our new district attorney, and really pleased with the work that she's doing there, and doing everything we can to identify limited resources to deal with the backlog of caseload in the district attorney's office. Couple of other items I wanted to update you on briefly, and I know we want to get to the legislative update in that exact session. We had public comment this morning from a couple of individuals regarding our parks and the master plan, the Large Events Task Force, and I think that's timely, as I was planning to update the board on this. I had an opportunity to go with our staff a couple of weeks ago and tour a number of parks and engage with our employees in the field. And of course, it's very impressive, the 70 recreational sites, 4,300 acres of parkland that Land County is responsible for maintaining and providing great recreational opportunities for our residents and visitors, from the Oregon coast to the Cascade Mountain Ranch. Five campgrounds, 229 campsites, with 78% summer occupancy and 62% annual occupancy, 15 reservable picnic facilities at five locations, water access at 37 sites throughout Land County, including five developed swim areas, beach access at three locations, 400 moorage slips at three marina locations, two of which I was able to see in a lot of investments that we've been able to make in improving the marina slips and generating more revenue for our parks. We have more than 2,400 moorings each year. We put more than $100,000 per year that's dedicated to natural areas and preservation and enhancement of our parks and natural areas. A number of, about a dozen major events that we host, there's been a lot of discussion about large events. I think it's important to note that the vast majority, almost exclusively, these events are recreation-based. There are half marathons, marathons, triathlons, things that are really positive activities for our residents and visitors. Bike races, the mushroom festival, the wildflower festival, which at Mount Pisgah that I was able to attend this past spring, a Land County Park Celebration. So a number of wonderful events there, and I'll touch in a minute about the Large Events Task Force and the process that we have going there. We have a $3.6 million budget, and $1.4 million of that is for materials and services and maintenance. Nine full-time employees, so 4,300 acres of land, at 70 sites, 229 campgrounds, and we have nine full-time employees to do all that maintenance. That stretches from the coast to the Cascades, and it's frankly astonishing to me how we are able to, with such limited staff, maintain a really quality park system that we want to continue to do. We do staff up in the summer with 17 temporary seasonal employees seasonally, and it's a really cost-effective model, where we're not paying the fringe benefit load for those employees who are able to do a lot of maintenance during the summer months. One of our efforts, and then I would say, 1.5 million visitors to our parks annually. All 50, they come from all 50 states and 25 countries. That's just another astonishing fact. And we don't often talk about our park system, because it is underfunded, and we have $17 million in deferred maintenance that we have to deal with. But I think that our staff is doing a great job at using limited resources to maintain that vast network of really outstanding parks and campgrounds and water access that we have. One of our goals, and we talked about this in the budget this year, that I'm sure will be a topic again as we head into next year's budget, is how we continue to be self-sufficient, financially self-sufficient in our parks arena. And we're setting a goal to be financially self-sufficient within the next few And we're setting a goal to be financially self-sufficient within the next few years. And our goal is to remove the need for use of the car rental tax in parks. And so looking at making additional investments like we've done at Armitage Park, where one of the best ribbon cuttings that I participated in in a couple decades was the opening of the restroom shower and laundry facility at Armitage Park. But it really is an outstanding facility. We leveraged 50% of the cost of that construction was from state, and it gave us the ability in that, that campground is packed. Throughout the summer, it's packed. And so we need to expand on those opportunities to generate revenue for our park system and make it more financially self-sufficient as the tax revenue that we collect and dedicate for that is being pulled in different directions. So with that, I also wanted to respond to just a couple of the public comments, and I will follow up and meet with Ms. Hoover and Ms. Otani with this information. But there were some comments about the draft master plan, and, and concern that I heard was that there wasn't enough openness, or concern about openness and transparency and back for the process. I want to make sure we get the record straight. The draft Parks Master Plan, and it is a draft, it has not even left the Park Advisory Committee. It's still in the Park Advisory Committee. It is currently in a several-month public comment period. So the public is welcome now to act, go to our website and provide comments on that draft plan. There's a link to submit comments online. We also have five regional meetings that are scheduled between September 10th and October 8th. Public comment on the Parks Master Plan will be open until the end of October. And I think it's important to know, I believe the last update on the Parks Master Plan is 20 to 25 years. So it's long overdue. And our staff and our Park Advisory Committee has gone through a long and extensive process to get this updated to priority to do it because it's a couple decades out of date, and you really should be updating master plans every five years or so. So we will continue that public comment period, but I encourage any members of our community who are interested in commenting to go online, to contact us, to attend one of the five scheduled public sessions that we have. And of course, it will go to our Planning Commission and here to the board for comment and approval before it is in effect. The other comment that was made was in regards to the naming of parks and Emerald Meadows in particular. The Emerald Meadows area, as I understand it, was named in 2012. It's my understanding we do not have a process when we name internal areas of existing parks. So an area of a park, Emerald Meadows, is an area of Mount Pisgah and the, the larger Mount Pisgah area and Howard Buford Park. And so we don't have a policy there. I think there was an effort made from a marketing standpoint to have a name that better reflected that area. That's something certainly that, you know, we can revisit if there's a desire to do so. It is my understanding that there is a process if we're looking at naming a park or an area after a name of an individual, and that there is a public process included there. So I think that's everything on the public comments. And again, we'll follow up with Ms. Hoover and Ms. Otani on that and make sure that, that we are committed to openness and transparency, making sure that we receive public comment on all of these efforts, and I think our staff has done a nice job. On the Large Events Task Force, that is a process that is nearing completion. I'll be given an opportunity to review the recommendations and the work of that group, and then it will come to the board, and we will have presentation from our staff and from the committee. And so there will be a significant public process there. As the board knows, we've had public comment on that effort through our engagement in County website and our general website and a number of public meetings that are held there. I think I'll end there because I know we want to get through the rest of the meeting unless you have any other questions or comments for me.
Any questions for the administrator? Seeing none, then we'll move on to item 6B, which is a report on the 2015 Oregon Legislature. We have Alex Kyler and Sarah Chinskey. Mr. Kyler.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Alex Kyler, you're in our Governmental Relations Manager. Mr. Chair, you have a, and Commissioners, you have a board packet in front of you that outlines our report here. I think, given your, if I could ask Mr. Chair a question about time, we probably, we had asked for an hour to do this. I don't, I think you were trying to get an exec session in before lunch?
If we can.
Do you want to? I mean, we've got probably 30 minutes for each of us. We could, we could adjust if you'd like.
I'll look to the, I know the exec session is not a lengthy one, so I would, let's try to steam through this. Yeah, let's try and steam through this and see where we are, whether we go to lunch and come back for exec session or not. We'll determine when we see how far we get with this, so.
All right. Well, my presentation is going to outline the outcomes of our legislative priorities as well. I'll hit on a couple of other things that we did during, that we did focus on during the legislative, legislative session. Sarah's going to cover marijuana policy strictly as soon as I get done with this. You have a packet with a board memo. There's one thing I would like the board to pay attention to, which was under item 3B, which is policy, policy issues. It has been our practice that if we've got a previously established priority, and we haven't been successful with it in Salem, it sort of stays on the list as one of our priorities. So in terms of the direction that I'm feeling, I, I would be going into the short session with an attempt to, you know, continue conversations with our existing priorities that we either did not get introduced, or we got introduced and they died for whatever reason. And there's a couple of places where I'll point those out as we go through this. So you have an attachment A that I hope looks somewhat familiar to you. These were the adopted priorities. This first group, we established those back in August at one of your regular scheduled board meetings, August 2014, in advance of the 15 session. There's no particular order to these. These were just what we adopted as legislative priorities. We then had another meeting in January, late January 15, where we added several more priorities. So I'll get through these as quickly as I can. The first one was, we were seeking just a special appropriation for the DA's office. Obviously, there's been a lot of discussion at the board level about how to bolster funding for our DA. We'd seen in the previous session that Marion County had gotten sort of an earmark due to the presence of the state hospital. We tried to see if we could get something similar for Lane County due to the presence of the new hospital here. I think we did everything right in terms of trying to position that into the right hands. It just didn't show up in the end-of-session budget bills. And there, there wasn't other, Marion County did not get another special dispensation. In most of the end-of-session bills, you just didn't see this kind of sort of specialized earmark generally. So something that we can continue to, certainly can continue to talk to legislature about in terms of our DA funding needs. There was, I think on number two, we were seeking a special appropriation for territorial highway, an ongoing project of the county. The, we had hoped that we would position that project within what we expected to be a transportation package during the session. The transportation package really faltered early, very early in the session, within essentially the first two weeks. It was clear that the transportation package was going to be in trouble. It was revived much later in the session with commitments from leadership to try to get something done before the close of session. And unfortunately, after the first hearing on June 24th, that failed to advance. The good news was that territorial funding was actually in that proposal. And it was, it was really quite good for territorial. There was several Lane County projects, safety improvements along Main Street and Springfield, safety improvements along 26 from Eugene to Florence, and territorial highway were all in there. So we were, we had a pretty active interest in that measure. Ultimately, it was clear that there was going to be some problems getting that proposal through the House. Senate seemed to be pretty interested in it, the House just was going to be a barrier. Item three, we were trying to figure out a way to get some CTE funding dedicated over to the Lane Workforce Partnership. I think we, we, this was our first effort at this. Good conversations, sort of got ourselves, at least the coalition that's been involved with CTE, this is career and technical education funding, was, I think, interested in what we had to say. We probably were not involved enough with that coalition from the get-go to really have our proposal make it through to the end of the session. And given that we were, in a way, competing with school funds, the school lobby, the educational lobby came out strongly opposed to our proposal. So we really faced an uphill battle with legislators in trying to advance it. Nonetheless, we did get a hearing in the Senate Committee on Workforce that moved it to Senate Finance. Senate Finance didn't hold a work session on the bill, and it failed to advance. We tried a couple of things to position ourselves for a budget note, and ultimately, you know, had a really good conversation with the governor's staff where we focused on trying to emphasize the need for the legislature when it appropriates money into a variety of programs. Sometimes there's not much feedback that the legislature gets about how effective those dollars are, and that was one of the things that we felt pretty strongly about with the Lane Workforce Partnership, that they would have been able to provide good data back to the legislature about how effective these dollars could have been. So more conversations to come on that one. I think that's a good example of an effort that we had it as a priority. We got some conversations going, it didn't advance, but it's probably worth it for us to continue those conversations. Item four was our attempt to close a little loophole that existed and was identified actually at the board a couple of years ago where the Lane Code was amended such that we could not regulate the sale of used firearms outside of city limits. And we managed to get some bit, some language into a bill that actually came out of the House, passed the House, but, excuse me, came out of the Senate just fine, but ran into some problems in the House. This board, I think, is very aware of Senate Bill 941, the background check bill. There was a number of promises made in Salem to do some fixes to that, to that measure. And Senate Bill 315 happened to have the right relating to language, got caught up in that and became a fix-it bill for Senate Bill 941. And so our language got stripped out, something else got added in. That something else failed to advance, so it was sort of disappointing for us. Chairman Barker, who chairs the House Judiciary, did promise to introduce something during the short session to try to close that loophole once again. So we'll see how that, that evolves for the short session. The good news here is that we did, we did again build a little bit of a coalition. The City of Portland, City of Eugene, both very interested in, in this, in this particular issue and are well aware of the problems with that loophole. Item five was something that we noticed during our public safety levy, which was there was a bit of a disconnect between ballot measure language and what, sort of the promotion of the measure suggested with respect to revenue generation. We got some language for now, the mandatory ballot measure language, previously said this is based on an estimate by the assessor. New language will say based on an estimate including compression, collection, and early, the early discount rate. So we've, we've got some additional guidance for assessors as they tell folks who are writing ballot measures how much money these measures are going to, to generate. That was introduced by Representative Rively and was, of his bills, the first one to pass court chambers. So he was, he was pretty excited to have that one come, come through. Item six, motor voter registration. This is one we talked about a lot. I think the board was, was pretty vocal on this particular issue, and thus, so was I in Salem. We testified on a, on a couple of fronts on this bill, and I think really managed to get, there were some interesting statements on the floor when it came to a vote that suggested there were some promises being made for funding, and ultimately, there is funding for the measure for counties, sort of a direct appropriation for half of the money, and then the other half going to the E-Board so that the E-Board will receive a, a report from the Secretary of State and parse out dollars as necessary in the second, in the second half of this, this effort. Courthouse funding, item seven. You know, I think we did everything right. I had thought we'd done everything right in terms of being, generating information at the right times, being at the hearings. We had a good collaboration between us and the courts. We had worked with the Association of Oregon Counties to be on the list in the Chief Justice's package, and there was a lot of surprises at the end of the day when we weren't in, weren't on the list. And I'm still not exactly sure what happened. Our proposal was slightly different than the others in that it was for planning dollars, not, not pure construction dollars, and that might have had something to do with it. The good news here is, is that the bonds that are being issued for courthouse funding will not be issued until last bond sale in the biennium at any rate. And so we've got an opportunity to still get ourselves on the list without any changes in the, in the, in the revenue generation if we can manage to get this issue onto the legislature's radar screen for 2017. And those efforts are, I'm undertaking those right now. CAFSA funding is item eight. CAFSA funding, we are not, we were not successful in getting the 5.2 million general fund back into the CAFSA fund. The legislature did allocate $33.6 million for CAFSA for the counties. That's slightly down from the past two biennia, so we're seeing continued sort of erosion in assessment funding, and I think this is a story that will continue to play out where they're just, we're just not getting enough dollars into the assessor's office to really allow them to be excellent collectors of tax revenue. I think that's still an issue that will play out in the legislature. The, the interesting thing there is even the Department of Revenue was having some problems getting their, their pertinent staff funded. And for whatever reason, the legislature gave that appropriation to the E-Board so for further conversation with the department about how to fund the staff who worked with counties to make sure tax collections occur. Number nine is state sick leave response. There were two bills that got passed, Senate Bill 454 and Senate Bill 968. We were seeking a preemption of the statutory authority of local governments to set terms and conditions of employment. Senate Bill 454 does have a preemption that was specific to sick leave, so it does have language that says sick leave, not terms and conditions of employment. Senate Bill 968 is not a permanent preemption, it's a temporary preemption, but it does provide that local governments may not pass ordinances related to temporary works, or excuse me, flexible work schedules, so schedule requirements. Item 10, ongoing conversations and good conversations about the nexus between public safety and mental health. There was, I thought we had done some good work to get a draft bill created that was, Senator Przyanski helped us get into Legislative Council and get drafted. Unfortunately, we were unable to get that bill introduced. There were some hiccups with the Senate President's Office who had sort of a different approach planned. I think that that, that different approach didn't quite work out as well as he had hoped. We did see Chairman Greenlick of the House Healthcare Committee, who was instrumental in your earlier presentation of that public health work. So Chairman Greenlick really shepherded through two sessions this focus on public health. He's feeling that work got accomplished and suggested that their next target is this nexus between mental health and public safety. And so I think we'll see a lot of work during this interim and over the, of course, the next couple of next couple of sessions, at least with respect to his committee, I'm working on this particular issue. We did, finally, number 11, the filling the gap in youth mental health services. We actually did get a specific earmark of $250,000 for a project in Lane County to have a new, new operation over at the Silver Youth Campus where kids who are at risk of getting involved with the criminal justice system, so these are kids who have not been adjudicated yet or, or police involved, and especially those kids who are also in foster care. This is a center where they will be able to have sort of a timeout, get some wraparound services. We're really feeling pretty good about it. Nice partnership between Lane County and the Department of Human Services to get this done. And we've had, we've had several meetings about how to now implement that, and I think you'll, you'll hear more about how, how that will evolve within the next couple of weeks. We've got some spending authority or, or grant authority that the administrator has to ask you for, and so that'll be, that'll be coming shortly. The next section was the reaffirmation of existing priorities. There's a couple of things here that I wanted you to note. The strike-throughs mean that I just didn't find an opportunity to get a bill introduced. There just wasn't a way to get it done during this session. And so that's, when you see a strike-through, that's what it means. It just, I just couldn't find an avenue for that kind of work. But item two, family mediation. This has been something that's been ongoing for several sessions where we've been trying to find money for family mediation. We tried a couple of different approaches this session and were unsuccessful, unfortunately. We are back to our, did manage to do the fallback position, which is allowing for some sharing of an appropriation that goes to law libraries to be moved over to family mediation. And so that work will come to you in a supplemental budget session where you'll see a little bit of a shift from the law library appropriation over to family mediation. Item three was on the CHIP. It was a part of the CHIP priorities, which was additional funding for the farm-to-school program. We actually got quite a bit more money this session for the farm-to-school program. You may have heard, there were some radio shows sort of on this. I think last week I heard a bit of a buzz about it. People are pretty excited by the increase in the, in the state funds for that program. Items five and six are somewhat, have been grouped together. We've had these mining issues in the county and we really did manage to get a couple of these across the finish line this session. Senate Bill 361 was signed into law. It will allow for better communication between Dogami and counties. Lot of work between the Aggregate Association, Dogami, and the counties to get this done, but I feel pretty good about that law. We didn't quite get the real estate disclosure bill across the finish line, but Senator Prozinski of House Judiciary had a sit-down in a room with a working group and we did come to some agreements about how to move that forward administratively. So the hope is, is that we will have some better ability for potential buyers of property to realize what might be around them in terms of goal five resources. Justice Court collections by the Department of Revenue. This is an issue that used to be a priority for us and we almost got it done in 2011. It got reintroduced this year. I didn't pay much attention to this bill because our Justice Court presence is so small now. The bill didn't, really nobody got behind the bill and it died in committee as a result. The road fund to sheriff patrol transfer sunset elimination, that's one that also's been on the Board's radar for a number of years. We did manage to get that, the sunset removed. So the significant part of that is that when you have that sunset removed, then it becomes actually part of statute. So it'll be, it'll be a section of ORS, whereas before it was sort of exists as a note in ORS. So we've got more permanence there with respect to counties' ability to shift those federal forest dollars into sheriff patrol. You guys mentioned earlier today the e-cigarette regulatory framework. We did see the passage of House Bill 2546, which is a statewide framework around the sale of e-cigarettes. What did not get across the finish line was Senate Bill 663, which was the retail licensing structure. We might see that come up again in the short session, it's not quite clear to me what will happen with that. I think there is a lot of interest by the Oregon Health Authority to have that. They need, they need some, some funding for staff to actually do that. And so there is some iterations of an agency getting physician authority and that sort of thing that become involved with this sort of work. But I think we'll see some interest on the, be, on the part of the Oregon Health Authority to continue to seek that retail licensing framework. Item 12 is something that clerks have been working on for a long time, trying to save some money at elections by not holding elections for precinct committee people, but in certain cases. So the uncontested races would just be essentially a given. The, almost made it across the finish line, there were two different versions in the House and the Senate, and ultimately, the Senate did not agree with the House language. And so the bill sort of died at that moment. So it was frustrating because there were two versions that came through both chambers, they just couldn't agree on the, on the final language. We didn't see too much work on the lifting of preemption on local cigarette taxes. There was a bill, it just, it didn't, it didn't make it across the finish line. It didn't, didn't get much. I think we had a hearing on the bill, talked to the chairman a little bit about it, but it just wasn't, the timing just wasn't right. Sobering is a very interesting topic for us in Lane County and we had some good news with the passage of House Bill 2936. Sobering facilities are now defined in law. That's a good thing. There's, the statutes speak clearly now to what sort of liability a police agency has when they drop off an individual at a sobering center, and that was very important. The unfortunate part is that where, there's, there's still no permanent source of funding for sobering facilities. So we saw some earmarked money and there's a, yet to be determined whether it'll be a grant program or now, how the money will be allocated, but about $3 million, we think, statewide for sobering facilities. We think we can probably get our hands on some of those dollars to support the work of the Buckley House here in Eugene. And then finally, you, you heard this morning, public health reform, House Bill 3100 was signed into law. I think Commissioner Lichen, you asked a question about, and Commissioner Bozovich, you testified about this, this thing about, well, what happens if there's not funding? And that's the big question. I mean, nice policy bill that lays out a new way of doing business, not a whole lot of conversation within the bill about how it's going to be funded. The good news is, we were able to get some language in there that does say that if the funding is not adequate, then the counties turn that back to the state of Oregon. And I, I think we were really trying for something almost akin to Community Corrections Act funding that says, you know, if the legislature does not appropriate enough, then we have the ability to opt out. It's not quite that, but it's pretty good. And if you want to see it, I think it's Section 29 in the bill. But we feel pretty good about that language of having the counties sort of having a definite voice within this about adequacy of funding. We did establish, like I said, some priorities very late in the sessions, session, county bankruptcy, the housing first project, and neither of those were able to advance. There did, there was a fix-it to the L.Rappa Board's structure and the centrally, the question about centrally assessed property, which had been subject of a fairly large lawsuit, was, was finalized. There's still not, there's still some, the assessor tells me there's still some lack of clarity about sort of how that will play out for us in particular. So I did want to just touch on a couple of things that we also worked on during the session that were not part of our formal priorities, but I know the Board had paid some attention to. There was a question of additional funding for DEQ staff from a surcharge on solid waste fees. That was passed by Senate Bill 245. There is now a $1.18 surcharge that we'll be turning over to the state for additional staff and work at the DEQ. The interesting piece on that bill is there is a, there's a process where, that they're going to determine by rule where counties that are determined to be distressed get a rebate of those dollars. It's not clear how they're going to define an economically distressed county. And so that's a topic of the rulemaking that is currently ongoing. We had a, there was a, there was some issues again from DEQ about clean diesel and looking at how to regulate certain off-road vehicles, for example. That bill did die and did not advance. There was, it was, it was sort of dicey. It was alive all through the session, sort of living down at Ways and Means, and so we were watching it pretty closely, but it never did, never did revive. There was some public contracting laws that we were following pretty closely. And in particular, there was one that Lane County was sort of held up as why this law, this proposal was so great. We managed to suggest some alternatives to the stories that were being told in Salem that we think were based more on, on fact than what the proponents of the bill had been suggesting. That bill failed to advance. I think some of the commissioners here remember sort of a larger-than-life figure who died last year, Dave Barrows, was one of the long, long time lobbyists in the Oregon Legislature, passed away suddenly last year. The Lobby Center is now going to be referred to as the Dave Barrows Lobby Center as a result of some action that the legislature took. And the nice thing about that is regardless of what happens to the Capitol Building with respect to construction and seismic improvements, that name will continue to go wherever the Lobby Center goes, so that's, that's what it means. There was, finally, there was some work that we did with respect to doctor recruitment, definitely on the radar screen of the legislature as it has been for us in our federal work. And certain lobbyists for Trillium and I worked pretty hard on trying to make sure that there was the correct language in that bill to allow us as much flexibility in the future for doctor recruitment. And we feel pretty good that, that we were successful in that effort as well. So with that, I'm going to open it up for any questions that you might have before I introduce Sarah's work here. Commissioners. Lichen.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Alex, thank you very much. Just a couple of things. I mean, we can, I'm not going to harp on a lack of a transportation bill, I harped on that enough. And it will probably be one of the more disappointing inactions, I think, this legislature's had. I'd like to actually focus in and maybe get your thoughts going back to SB 885, and that is the, the Lane County Pilot Project to locally fund the career, technical education and workforce development. And the reason why I want to bring that up is because, as you know, recently we were just included in the award of a manufacturing community's legislation from, that came from the federal government. I guess the question I have, is there a way to maybe connect the dots on this one? Because I really feel that this is, this is one now where you can talk about, because if you look at what the, the idea is to incorporate, is, I mean, economic development and Lane workforce development, I mean, there it is, right there. Is there a way that maybe because we've been awarded that, that maybe this can be reintroduced and maybe connect more of those dots to really, so maybe there's, there's opportunity to get support for that? Because I, I just, I don't know about you, but I'm getting sick and tired of hearing that Clark County is the fastest-growing county in the Pacific Northwest, and it is. I mean, that is fact. And until we maybe see some sort of tax reform, something that happens in this state, we're going to continue to lose out to Clark County, to Provo, Utah, to Boise, and yet these other communities around that just basically surround us because we're taking our competitiveness out. And to me, this is a great way to connect the dots, being, having this new, this manufacturing communities designation. Lane County is now a part of that. And so maybe your thoughts on this and, you know, if, if you think there's any appetite, I guess, for lack of a better word, to reintroduce this? I don't know if the short session, we're going to have to wait till 2017 session comes into play, maybe just to gather your thoughts on this? And if that is an opportunity to connect those dots?
Chair Bozovich and Commissioner Lichen, that's an interesting, interesting question. You know, I don't think we would introduce, reintroduce a bill as written. As you know, what we were trying to do was sort of like the road fund transfers, we were suggesting to take the federal forest dollars that would normally go into the school fund and earmark them instead to the partnership to also do career and tech ed. That said, what I saw with CTE money is there was a lot of, there was some focus on especially tech, you know, to say, okay, if we're going to do career and technical education, let's make sure that those proposals are focusing on tech ed. You know, the, the investing in manufacturing communities partnership in the Northwest was particularly interested in advanced wood products. And so, you know, that might be an angle where we could work on some of that kind of language where we would then position ourselves for some of those dollars to come to us. You know, that's, that is, that's not a bad idea. What I was, again, what I was also interested in was this idea that, as far as I can tell, these dollars go to schools and there's not a great feedback loop back to the legislature to say, okay, what was the experience? What was the effect of those dollars? How effective were they at getting kids into that pipeline? And I think in Eugene Springfield, there's probably some unique resources for providing better data back to the legislature about those investments. And so that's another thought I had, was how could we leverage some of those dollars to go into some of our entities here that are researchers, that are good at collecting data, like Christina Payne at the Workforce Partnership with respect to these kinds of things? So I think there's some opportunities there and, like I said, we were, we were able to insert ourselves into the conversation, so to the extent we can sort of maintain that to a hold, I think that's probably smart.
This isn't your grandfather's manufacturing anymore, and that's, that's how I want to make sure that we, we just saw in the national paper, median, in median wage, $95,000 a year. That's advanced manufacturing. And to me, when you look at wood products, they, you know, whether people have a positive or negative reaction over the wood products industry, it is high-tech manufacturing. And that's really how we need to present this. And if we're going to stay competitive, this is going to be key. So I, you know, however it can be reintroduced, I, I don't know, but I, I really think this is something we should keep our eye out as, as a potential and especially after being awarded that, that designation. So appreciate it. That's the question I had and I thank you for the, for the presentation.
Any other questions?
I just want to note real quick, you know, on that DEQ FTE bill, where they got, they got the extra dollar, the tipping fee went up to a buck 18. Those FTE were to run a, you know, recycling program for counties because some counties are failing to meet the state's goals relative to recycling. Lane County is meeting our goals. So, you know, the real issue that's coming up on recycling is the actual tipping fee for co-mingle recycling right now has jumped up for private haulers to $35 a ton. And that's going to be the real challenge. And, and raising our tipping fees that are, at Short Mountain for regular garbage to support education programs that are not really needed in this county is not helping us in that, that effort. So it's just, it was, it was a bill we took an against stance on and were unsuccessful because we didn't feel that they were necessary FTE, nor they, nor did it benefit Lane County. So I guess we're moving on to marijuana now.
So you have in your packet Attachment B, which Sarah Chinskey is the author of, she's also got some slides she's going to show you. I just wanted to just give you a brief introduction here. I just wanted to just give you a brief introduction here. Obviously, the voters passed Measure 91, and the legislature, because it was a legislative initiative, the legislature had the ability to futz with it, if you will. And while it was a fairly decently-written initiative, there were some problems with it that the legislature wanted to address. They created the, perhaps aptly or inaptly named Joint Committee on Implementation of Measure 91. That, that committee worked very hard early in the session and spent a lot of time trying to rectify medical marijuana with recreational marijuana. And that was advice they'd gotten after a feedback from how Colorado implemented their law. So there was some criticism about the amount of time they were spending on medical marijuana, but I think from their perspective, they really saw that work as foundational to be able to implement Measure 91. But it was sort of interesting because that committee just couldn't, they couldn't manage to get all their work done. And towards the end of the session, it was actually split into two separate committees. So there was a House Committee and a Senate Committee that helped sort of move things along. The, Sarah and I were on a regular communication weekly. They, they had hearings, not every week, but we were, we were in close communication to sort of say, hey, do we need to be inserting ourselves with any sort of comments from Lane County at this point? It was, it was a continued topic of conversation at the Legislative Committee. And so we monitored it pretty closely. You know, this has been a very contentious issue and a very complex issue. And I think, you know, for me, I've had to sort of temper my expectations. We saw a key person at OLCC who was responsible for some of the rulemaking get fired relatively late in the session because of some of his actions. We've seen, just yesterday, I think it was the state of Washington announced that their guy who'd been involved with all the rulemaking development for their program resigned because of just the pressure of trying to rectify these two, their medical marijuana and their recreational marijuana systems. Today, I saw in the newspaper that industrial hemp permits have been essentially, there's been a moratorium on issuing new industrial hemp because of, I'm not sure what, but some sort of complex, complexity with respect to impact of industrial hemp on medical marijuana grow sites in southern Oregon. So this is a highly, highly complicated arena of public policy. Not to mention the overlay of the federal law, right? So, you know, you've just got a lot of different things happening. And I think what Sarah's gonna try to do today is give you a sense of, you know, sort of the high-level aspects of this bill, where the board has authority and where they don't. And what we're trying to set up is that there will be a conversation, I think scheduled for September eighteenth.
I think it's fifteenth.
Fifteenth. Where you'll really have some questions about land use. And those, that's one place where all along Sarah had said, you know where this is gonna get really interesting is in land use. And so you'll see that presentation come on the fifteenth. So with that, I'm gonna turn it over to Sarah and be interested to, to see how this evolves.
Good morning. And in consideration of time, I'll just go ahead and hit the high points that I have in the PowerPoint. The attachment has more detail, but I'll just go ahead and. So the legislation that was introduced in 2015 session, the big one is House Bill 3400. That's the omnibus bill that amends the Oregon Medical Marijuana Act and Measure 91. It's about a hundred and thirty-page bill. It's huge. And there's a lot of detail in there related to both medical and changes to Measure 91. House Bill 2041 revises the state tax structure for recreational marijuana. In the original Measure 91, it started out as a growers' tax. It's now been changed to a point-of-sale tax, which is easier to implement and collect. Senate Bill 460 is the bill that authorizes the early sale of recreational marijuana by medical marijuana dispensaries. Senate Bill 844 creates a marijuana task force and provides for expungement of certain offenses. It also allows certain hospice and residential facilities to be designated as an additional caregiver under the Medical Marijuana Act. Senate Joint Memorial 12 encourages Congress to declassify marijuana from Schedule I in the Controlled Substances Act. And it also identifies issues for the state of Oregon in implementing Measure 91, which are banking and research by public institutions. There, obviously, there's federal issues with federal law with both of those. So under federal law, marijuana is still, under the Controlled Substances Act, a Schedule I drug, which means that it has a high potential for abuse. According to federal law, it has no currently accepted medical use in the treatment in the United States. And there's a lack of accepted safety for use of the drug or other substance under medical supervision. Measure 91 has decriminalized personal growing and use by persons twenty-one years of age and older. It's designated OLCC with the licensing and regulating of the growing, processing, and sale of recreational marijuana. There are four types of licensing under Measure 91. There's producers, processors, wholesalers, and retailers. And an individual may hold more than one type of license. Under the personal allowance section, a person twenty-one or older can have in their household up to eight ounces of homegrown usable marijuana, up to four marijuana plants, up to sixteen ounces of homemade cannabinoid products in solid form, up to seventy-two ounces of homemade cannabinoid products in liquid form, and up to sixteen ounces of homemade cannabinoid concentrates. And this is per household, not per individual, which is an important distinction. A person twenty-one or older can deliver to another person twenty-one or older for non-commercial purposes up to one ounce of homegrown marijuana, up to sixteen ounces of homemade cannabinoid products in solid form, up to seventy-two ounces of homemade cannabinoid products in liquid form, and up to sixteen ounces of homemade cannabinoid So House Bill 2041 imposes the tax on the retail sale of marijuana. It's to be imposed upon consumers and collected by the retailers. It's a seventeen percent point-of-sale tax. Beginning October first, medical marijuana dispensaries are gonna be allowed to sell limited marijuana retail product. There is an early sales tax rate that will begin January 2016. It will be twenty-five percent on those limited products. However, there will be no tax applied between October and January. That early sales tax begins January 2016. The idea is, OLCC does not foresee being able to have licensed retail outlets up and running prior to the third quarter of 2016, so they want to have a legal outlet where people can purchase the product. Beginning, on December 31st, 2016, those early start provisions of House Bill 2041 are gonna be repealed. The tax distribution from the state will be forty percent to the Common School Fund, twenty percent to the Mental Health, Alcoholism, and Drug Services, fifteen percent to state employees, ten percent to cities, ten percent to counties, and five percent to the Oregon Health Authority for alcohol and drug abuse prevention, early intervention, and treatment. The distribution to the cities and counties prior to July 2017 is gonna be based on population. After July 1st, 2017, it's a much more complicated allocation. Fifty percent of the ten percent based is going to be based on the number of licenses, the production process, or wholesale licenses issued in the jurisdiction of either the city or the county. It makes it very specific, identifies incorporated areas versus unincorporated areas. And fifty percent of the ten percent is going to be based on the number of licenses, retail licenses issued in each city and county. The early sales of recreational marijuana are gonna begin October 1st, 2015, at medical marijuana dispensaries. There'll be limited products, so a quarter ounce of leaves and flowers per person per day, or four marijuana plants that are not flowering, and also marijuana seeds. There's, there are no regulations, you know, a person could technically go to multiple dispensaries and obviously buy more product, but that's what they're limited to in each individual dispensary. There is the ability for local jurisdiction to adopt an ordinance prohibiting early sales without referring it to the voters. Under House Bill 3400, does not restrict where medical marijuana grow sites or recreational marijuana producers can locate. Those are gonna be local land use jurisdiction issues. It does place more stringent limitations on the number of plants that a medical marijuana grower can have in residential zone, and it does direct the OLCC to adopt rules restricting the size of recreational grow canopies. Under medical grow site regulations, in a residential zone, a medical grow site may have up to twelve mature plants. In any other zone, they're able to have up to forty-eight mature plants. There are exceptions to this rule. If the grower has registered with the site prior to January 1st, 2015, that grow site is limited to the number of plants that were at the grow site as of December 31st, 2015, not to exceed twenty-four mature plants in a residential zone and ninety-six mature plants in other zones. Medical marijuana dispensaries may not be located in residential zones. They may not locate within a thousand feet of most schools. A dispensary may not be located at the same address as a grow site. And a dispensary may not be located within a thousand feet of another dispensary. On January 2016, Oregon Health Authority are gonna stop issuing cards to patients without Oregon addresses. This has been something with the Oregon Medical Marijuana Act that has been available to people that are not residents of Oregon. Medical marijuana growers are gonna fall under the new residency requirements. And beginning July 1st, any new medical marijuana growers that have had to demonstrate that they've lived in Oregon for two years in order to be registered with the state. Wholesale and retail licenses may not locate in an area zone exclusively for residential use and may not locate within a thousand feet of schools. The local tax option gives the governing body of a city or county the authority to adopt an ordinance to be referred to the electors. It may not exceed three percent on the sale of marijuana items sold, and it must refer the ordinance to the electors at the next statewide general election. If a local jurisdiction, however, prohibits the establishment of any of the recreational marijuana licenses or any of the medical marijuana registrants, it does not have the authority to impose a local tax. Local jurisdictions may prohibit certain activities within their jurisdiction, recreational marijuana producers, processors, wholesalers, and retailers, and medical marijuana processors and dispensaries. So in enacting the ban, before December 24th, 2015, a local jurisdiction that voted against Measure 91 by fifty-five percent or more can enact the ban without referring it to the voters on any of those listed activities. After December 24th, it must be referred to the voters as statewide general election. And adoption of the ordinance essentially acts as a moratorium on new facilities until the election occurs. Some medical activity is not subject to the ban. Those dispensaries and processors that have been registered with the state before the local jurisdiction adopts its prohibition. Those dispensaries are not subject to the ban if they've already successfully completed a land use application process. And a local jurisdiction enacting a prohibition on any of the marijuana activities will likely not be eligible to receive any state tax revenues, or again, impose the local tax. Land use compatibility statement is gonna be required for all licensing, processing, for all licensing for recreational licenses, excuse me. And you'll get more of a land use update from, I believe it's gonna be Mark Rest from Land Use, from Public Works. You do have the ability to adopt reasonable time, place, manner regulations, includes hours of operation, location, manner of operation, also taking into consider the public's access to the premises. And this last slide is the most recent list of jurisdictions that have decided to ban marijuana activities in their jurisdictions. And I believe that all of these have decided to place a ban on all four types of licensing. And I have that in front of me here. They have, the bans that are being, by these jurisdictions prohibit producers, processors, wholesalers, and retail licensing. So you can see where jurisdictions will need to put it before the voters in the next general election, and certain jurisdictions do not because they received a vote of fifty-five percent or more in opposition to Measure 91. Be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions? Wow, that was a lot to take in.
Sorry.
Not to mention the, the background material, which is even lengthier. And if you really wanted to read the measures, it's even lengthier. So I appreciate the summary. Just to make clear, the optional three percent local tax, when they refer to the next general election, they're referring to an even-year November election?
Correct.
Okay. So it's not like we'd have to do it for this November.
Correct.
Commissioner Farr.
Just a comment, I'd like to thank you all for providing the high-level view of the Joint Committee's work. I'm choking enough with the smoke. Ah, yes, smoke in the air, high-level things.
How do you follow up with that one? Any other questions for staff on, on the Legislative Update? I really appreciate that. I guess we need to start thinking about, I guess, is Legislative Committee scheduled to meet in the near future to start talking about the short session? And if there are any additional priorities we need to identify?
Chair Bozovich and Commissioners, I haven't sought a Legislative Committee meeting. I wanted to have this presentation first. Legislative days will be, Legislative days are three days of hearings that will occur, that occur during the interim. This year, we're gonna have Legislative Days in September, November, and either December or January. I think I put it on here. So we'll start to get a sense of where the, where the committees, yeah, September, November, and January. So there will be nine days of interim hearings totally before the short session starts. We'll start to see from that work a sense of perhaps some, you know, signals to what the legislature is contemplating. I've already heard, you know, just through the grapevine sort of rumblings about this and that, and what the legis, what the short session will address, and particularly what they won't address. So my sense was, again, that there's a couple of things that came out of the session, the courthouse funding, the used firearms transactions. There's a couple of things that I'm sort of aware that will, that I think will, will continue to be priorities, and there's an opportunity in the short session. Some staff and Commissioners have already alerted me to various conceptual ideas of things that, that, that they see as potentially a need for legislative priorities. Whether or not we can get those going during the short session is, is another question. The short session is thirty-five days. Typically, it's pretty scripted, so you, we just have to remain as flexible as possible to see where there are opportunities. I'm happy to, I guess to answer your question, yes, we will have one. I don't have one scheduled yet.
Okay. I just, remembering the last short session, we laid the groundwork for some of our successes in this session. So if we have those priorities identified, we might be able to start our work with the legislators to get them educated. And then, you know, you walk into the next long session already that far down the road, like getting an actual legislative concept drafted, et cetera. So I appreciate that. Any other questions for staff? Great. Well, thank you very much. So that moves on to County Council. I don't think they had any announcements, other than we do have need for an exec session. Hopefully, it will be brief. Commissioners' business announcements. Any announcements from Commissioners? Then, how about agenda team request or work session requests? Moving right along, review of assignments.
I didn't have any, hopefully, the responses to the public comment this morning, because I did hear a couple of questions about the policy on naming. I hope I provided enough clarity there, but if there's any follow-up that's desired, we can certainly respond to it. Other than that, I didn't hear any assignments.
So if there's, I'll first go to other, other business before we go to exec session. Is there any other business for the board this morning? Is there any other business for the Board this morning? So I'm going to take us into exec session, and I'm not planning on us coming out in the regular session. I don't believe there's anything on exec session that requires us to take action, public action. So I'm going to probably adjourn us out of exec session. So the Board of Commissioners will meet in executive session and conduct deliberations with persons designated by the governing body to carry on labor negotiations. This executive session is held pursuant to ORS 1926602D, which allows the Board of Commissioners to meet in executive session for the purposes listed above. Representatives of the news media and designated staff shall be allowed to attend the executive session. All other members of the audience are asked to leave the room. Representatives of the news media are specifically directed not to report on any deliberations during the executive session except to state the general subject of the session as previously announced. No decisions may be made in executive session. And I don't believe we're going to come back out in a public session, so we will probably adjourn from there. We are now recessed into executive session. We'll meet in the Board of Commissioners conference room as quickly as we can reconvene.